He just had rule and established a court.
All right.
Did you welcome everybody to the city council meeting Tuesday, May 16?
We personally wel- individually, yes.
Before we have any motions here, do we have any comments on closed session?
No comments for closed session.
Okay. Any motions?
Make a move, move into closed session.
Say it.
Motion is Mayor Protem Nobak, second is Councilmember Emire. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, four nothing.
Okay, I'm gonna call the, uh, the meeting of the City Council of the City of San Clemente Tuesday, May 16th, 2023 to order. Uh, this is, this is our regular business meeting, and we are going to start out with the invocation from Remy Shawari. Okay, uh, please, uh, please rise if you'd, uh, if you care to, uh, to participate.
Oh divine providence, this assemblage is composed of thy friends who are attracted to thy beauty and are set ablaze by the fire of thy love. Turn these souls into heavenly angels, resuscitate them through the breath of thy holy spirit, grant them eloquent tongues and resolute hearts, bestow upon them heavenly power and merciful susceptibilities. Cause them to become the prominent promulgators of the oneness of mankind and the cause of love and conquered in the world of humanity, so that the perilous darkness of ignorant prejudice may vanish through the light of the sun of truth. This dreary world may become illumined, this material realm may absorb the rays of the world of spirit, these different colors may merge into one color, and the melody of praise may raise to the kingdom of thy sanctity. Verily thou art the omnipotent and the almighty. Abdol Baha.
Please, uh, please stay standing. Mr. Schreeder, will you kindly step to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilmember Ann Meyer.
Present.
Councilmember Cabal.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Noobat.
Here.
And I am here, all four councilmembers are present. Moving on to special presentations.
First item on the agenda is April update on the homeless issue.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Adam Matamia, Deputy Community Development Director. I'm joined tonight by our new co-compliance manager, Danielle Sorahan, uh, and, uh, so I will take care of tonight's presentation, I will assist with her next month, and then she'll take it from there. Uh, so this is the community outreach and engagement monthly report for the month of April 2023. Uh, last month, we had, uh, 343 contacts with, uh, unduplicated individuals, um, 67, uh, excuse me, 67, uh, were unduplicated contacts. Um, the numbers are a little bit, uh, lower than the previous months, a lot of that had to do with, um, the, uh, the North Beach situation and, uh, the decentralization of, uh, of a number of the, uh, individuals that are, uh, outreach, uh, staff contact.
When you say the North Beach situation, what do you mean?
Oh, the, um, since a lot of the contacts that were previously made were centrally located in, uh, the North Beach area, it was easier for our outreach staff to find individuals and make those contacts. Since the North Beach area has, um, has been cleaned up quite a bit, uh, people have, um, have located to other places, and sometimes it's a little harder for us to find those contacts, so that's why the outreach contacts were a little bit lower, uh, in the last month. Uh, staff, uh, continues to provide, uh, assistance, and the, um, primary amount of assistance that was provided for the month of April, uh, was transportation assistance. Uh, we did also, um, offer outside agency referrals, um, mental health, uh, and financial assistance where some of the larger, uh, uh, services, uh, provided last month. As far as the street exits, uh, this was our best month, uh, uh, of record, we had 28, uh, individuals that were, uh, exited from the streets, 17 of those were family reunifications, uh, those family reunifications generally, uh, stem from the transportation assistance provided by the outreach, uh, staff to reunite individuals with their families. Uh, we also had nine people, uh, go into a shelter and two into permanent, uh, housing situations. Uh, in the, uh, month of April, we had, uh, 67 unduplicated individuals contacted, of those, uh, 67, 57 were open to, uh, shelter and housing assistance, uh, when that would become available, uh, and this represents, uh, 85% of our, um, individuals contacted were open to, uh, shelter and housing. And that wraps up the report for the month of April, and I am available for any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You, you said, we've been putting people in housing every month, so from our fixed beginning number, is it decreasing every month? That, so we started at 98, are we down to like 50 now? Or, uh...
In terms of, like, street exits, once people...
Yeah, we have all these street exits, but are we losing, uh, uh, the unhoused? Are they, are we down now, or is it, are we still the same number?
Uh, well, there's a few, uh, aspects to that, uh, to our response on that. Uh, the first is, every month we see new people coming into town, um, and so, uh, a lot of the, uh, reunifications are, um, are for people that don't have quite as many ties, uh, to the local community, they have family in, um, that's outside of the community, we can, um, uh, uh, help them, uh, reunite. The, um, uh, as far as how many of those return, we generally find about four or so, but the, uh, the overall number of, of unduplicated individuals contacted tends to remain about the same, about 60, 65, uh, as it was in, in April.
All right, thank you.
A question, I, I was impressed with the, uh, with the family unification numbers, about over half were, were, uh, reunified with family members. Are those family members out of the area, or local, or where are those families located? Do you have to buy bus or plane tickets to, to connect them with their families?
Yeah, so most of the, most of those are outside of the city of San Clemente. Uh, there are instances where there's a family reunification within the city, but, um, that's usually one of the, kind of, the first questions that we, we ask is...
The number was pretty high, 50% plus, what, what was the, what do you attribute that to? Just the communication to actually find out what, why they're on the street and what the, what the issue is?
Well, um, I can say the success is due to our community outreach staff ma- making consistent, um, uh, progress with the individuals that they, uh, uh, contact, uh, but the, the amount of reunifications for last month, um, it, it may just, it may be a, a result of, uh, the closeness of, of people's, um, families, um, that, meaning that they're close enough that our, uh, outreach staff is able to provide transportation assistance to their, uh, family's, uh, homes. Um, that's, that's usually a regional issue, if, if people, uh, have family that's further outside of the Southern California area, we, we generally need to work with, uh, other agencies to provide, uh, a service like Homeward Bound.
Okay, I just, I just was impressed with the number, that's, I was impressed, I'm glad to see that effort stayed in place.
Yeah, no, it's great, thank you.
Yes.
You mentioned that the North Beach situation has, has decentralized. Uh, do we know whereabouts, uh, the unsheltered went to with, did they leave San Clemente? Are they still in San Clemente? Uh, any more context on that?
Yeah, so there were a, there were a few people that were in the North Beach area that, um, were reunified with, with family, um, but the majority of, uh, the folks that were down there are, are still in the area, uh, there's, there's not, uh, another location like North Beach where, you know, they, it's, it's, it's turned, it's turned into a, a growing situation, uh, and we are aware of a few folks that have found, uh, uh, campsites outside of the city boundaries.
Um, we have a presentation, maybe, on Homeward Bound, but I think you, did you mention it a, a moment ago, as, as far as the, the family reunification, I'm just kind of wondering how that project, if any, plays into the, the family reunifications?
Yeah, so, uh, if there, if there is an opportunity to reunite somebody with family, they're outside of the, um, uh, the regional area and require, uh, Homeward Bound, uh, type of, uh, of assistance, we would work with, um, nonprofit agencies that, um, work within that program, uh, to, to reunite people with their families, and those numbers would be reflected because our outreach staff is essentially, you know, coordinating that effort. Over the last, I want to say six months or so, I, I believe we've had four, uh, four individuals reunited with family throughout, uh, Homeward Bound, uh, the rest of the family reunifications were all orchestrated by city staff.
And the difference there is local versus a longer distance away?
Yes.
Homeward Bound would be that farther distance away, local, we can handle on our own?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Adam, what was your name again?
This is Danielle Sorahan.
Danielle.
Yes, hi, thank you.
Yes, so next, next month, it'll be you in the hot seat down there?
It will.
Okay, all right, welcome to the team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome to San Clemente.
Thank you.
We do have one speaker card.
Okay.
Lois McNichol.
Yes, hi, I'm on the homeless situation. So, I've been listening to all of these presentations on this 60 or so people that we're contacting every month, however, it doesn't, I'm trying to, to make that relate to the... However, it doesn't, I'm trying to do, make that relate to the five thousand homeless that were put into a different presentation that we had about the number that are actually in San Clemente. And the, the word that I believe Mr. Cabral was looking for was churn. In other words, how many of these homeless people do we act, do you get housing for, whether it's in a shelter, or whether or not they reunite with their families, only to find out that four or five months later, or four or five weeks later, they are back out on the streets again? And that is a very important number for all government agencies, because it is one that we want to look at, make sure that if there's a prob, that, if that's a problem with, that they're returning back to the streets, that's the issue you have to address.
Thank you. And that was the only comment?
That was the only comment. Next item on the agenda is presentation of proclamation to Marine Safety Captain Malot, Marine Safety Officer Juney, and Ocean Life Guard Supervisor Blank Hall, setting apart May twenty-second through the twenty-ninth is National Beach Safety Week in San Clemente.
Well, we get a break from the firefighters this, this, this meeting. Usually Shane's here getting these proclamations, but Rod, you know, if we know anything about San Clemente, lifeguards are the heartbeat of San Clemente, right? Our beaches, we've had lifeguards seemingly forever. I think it's some of the best in the business, and they keep our families safe. You all keep our families safe at the beach, which is the most important thing for, for San Clementeans, right? So really happy this week that we can recognize you and present you with this, this proclamation here. All right. Whereas, the beautiful coastal beaches of San Clemente represent a world-renowned recreational resource, and whereas residents and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities, and whereas the aquatic environment has dangers that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards, and whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season, and whereas residents and visitors alike must remember to learn to swim, swim near a lifeguard, swim with a buddy, check with lifeguards, use sunscreen and drink water, obey posted signs and flags, keep the beach and water clean, learn rip current safety, enter water feet first, and wear a life jacket. Now therefore, I, Chris Duncan, Mayor of the City of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby proclaim May twenty-second through May twenty-ninth, 2023, as National Beach Safety Week in San Clemente, and urge all residents and visitors alike using our beaches to enjoy themselves at the beach while taking the appropriate safety measures to protect themselves and especially their children. So thank you very much, Rod. Yep. And I'll let you say a few words, but I know we don't have Nick. My man Nick is not here, he's probably watching the kids. And, and, and we have Jaden, though, Lifeguard of the Year from, was it last year, the year before?
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one. And is just one of our rising stars in, in the Marine Safety Unit. So happy to have you both here. Thank you so much every day for what you do, and please pass that on to the rest of the lifeguard corps so that they know how much we all appreciate them.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mayor Duncan, and councilmembers. For, I'm very honored to be here, to accept the proclamation. Like to introduce Jaden Blanc Hall as Mayor Duncan already introduced, but not here tonight is our full-time staff. First, Marine Safety Lieutenant Sean Stottemeyer, Marine Safety Officers Nick Juney, Ian Burton, and Blake Anderson for the great job they do to keep our team running. National Beach Safety Week is designed to make awareness of the dangers of the ocean, and with just a couple of weeks of jumping into the summer, it's a great time to spread that message. One of the greatest resources that we have here in San Clemente is our beautiful beaches, and I can't say enough how important it is for our lifeguards to be trained properly and be supported by everybody in the community. The ocean, it can be an excellent place to go, fun, exciting, but it can also be very dangerous. Our goal as lifeguards is to make sure that everyone has a safe and enjoyable day, and that includes the two and a half million visitors that we have each year, that, at the end of the day, they're going homes. And that's been the goal, and it's been going on for quite a long time. Last year, our lifeguards rescued over nineteen hundred swimmers in distress without any drownings, and ninety-six percent of those rescues were performed due to rip currents. So I encourage anyone going down to lifeguards, or down to the beach, go speak to a lifeguard. They'll give you the education, the dos and don'ts of rip currents. Also, I want to thank, again, I want to beforehand the mic over to Jaden, he wants to say a couple of words. I want to thank the councilmembers, the city management, and also the public for their continued support with the lifeguard department, and looking forward for a great summer and hope to see you on the beach. And I also want to give a little kudos to Jaden for excellent response to a night call-out earlier in the month. And as you mentioned, you know, OCFA's been taking the mic here so often, and Marine Safety's getting a chance here. Sad to say, like you said, Jaden's one of our shining stars, he's moving on to OCFA. So one day, he'll be at the mic here with another uniform on with our public safety partner. He accepted a job, he, he starts the academy at the end of July, so their gain our loss. But here's Jaden. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Duncan, really appreciate it. Captain Malot, thanks a lot. Once again, my name's Jaden, I am the Junior Lifeguard Coordinator for City San Clemente Marine Safety Division. I've had the privilege of being a part of that role for going on in my second summer here. Education and prevention is one of the key assets for being successful lifeguards, not just here in California, but coastal everywhere. And we've had a unique opportunity, with me in particular, functioning in the Junior Lifeguard Program, we have the awesome privilege of having over eight hundred and forty students every summer with twenty-one seasonal instructors to help facilitate that. Huge opportunity, it's a lot of fun, and with that being said, Junior Lifeguard Program started both back in nineteen sixty-six, and if you do the math, eight hundred and forty kids times that number by a couple of years, and we've had the opportunity to talk to tens of thousands of kids. So the JG Program, really big highlight, really good point to help educate the public, particularly the youth, about ocean safety. And another way that we've helped promote ocean safety is talking to the youth at elementary schools. Every spring, lifeguard staff go to elementary schools, third, fourth, fifth grade, and educate them on ocean safety as well, up to fifteen hundred kids every spring. With that being said, as Mayor Duncan and Captain Malot emphasized, just a couple tips for you all, just to promote ocean safety going into the summer here. Like Captain Malot said, know your limitations before entering the water. Always encourage everybody, talk to lifeguard staff before entering the water as well. Knowing your limitations would also mean, assuming that maybe there's something about the ocean that day that you don't know, so swimming near a lifeguard is helpful as well. Junior Lifeguard Program emphasizing ocean safety and also how to navigate rip currents and things of that sort. With all that being said, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you guys very much. And just on that final point, my wife Haley convinced me to do the cold plunge when the water was really cold a few months ago. Seemed like a good idea, but there was a rip, there was a rip current out there, we should, we should have asked the lifeguards first, so luckily we, we came out okay. But anyway, yes, please check with the lifeguards before you go in the water there. Yeah, we can't see above the surface what's going on there, so they know. All right, appreciate it, guys. Thanks.
Would you like to stay up there, Mayor Duncan? Next item on the agenda is presentation of commendation to Linda Veraster and Jim Sigafus, representing the San Clemente High School Educational Foundation in recognition of their twenty-fifth anniversary.
Okay. Right, you want to do your presentation first? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Duncan, City Councilmembers, Mr. Hall, city staff. My name is Linda Veraster, and I'm currently the Secretary of the San Clemente Educational Foundation and, and past president, and I'm here on behalf of Gary Green, who is our current president, who was unable to be here this evening. Essentially, the San Clemente Education, Educational Foundation for the last twenty-five years has been the academic booster club for San Clemente High School. Tens, or thousands of students at San Clemente High School have benefited from the programs that the San Clemente Educational Foundation supports. As we said, it's our twenty-fifth year, we are a nonprofit corporation, and we are an all-volunteer organization as well. Our fundraising that we do every year is done locally, for the most part, and we are supported by the family members of San Clemente High School, along with the business community and the, and our past students as well. So far, we have over two million dollars that's been donated to San Clemente Educational Foundation since its inception. You see a list of some of our programs. You can tell by the breadth of the support that we provide to the, to the students of San Clemente that we hit every student on this, on the academic spectrum. With our freshman four-year planning, we have people that start off their education in freshman year and end up going to some of the finest universities in, in the United States, as well as California. We provide support for even our sophomores for college counseling. When you get to be a senior, we have folks that will help you with your college essays and college applications. In addition, we have support, we support the Avid Program at San Clemente High School and the Auto Academy, all part of our portfolio. We supported classroom technology several years ago with the purchase of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars worth of Chromebooks, and we provide teacher training and support for students and teachers for the International Baccalaureate Program, as well as the Advanced Placement Testing Program. Oops, what did I do here? Standby. Oh, there we go. One of our crown jewels of our ed foundation is the peer, the San Clemente After School Tutorial, which is at no cost to any student. We have teachers as well as peer support, student support for every subject. They could come in after school four days a week. We average about fifty students a day. You could see ten thousand hours of, of support a year is a lot. As a mom who's paid for a math tutor, I could tell you, this is a real bargain for the families of San Clemente. Our annual budget for that program alone is about fifty thousand dollars. Money well spent, in my opinion. Oops, what did I do here? Oh, I think we're good there. Our latest project is a quarter of a million dollar upgrade to the San Clemente High School library. That is going to be starting, that program is going to be starting at the, right after school starts, excuse me, school ends this year, and it's going to be upgrades of technology, furniture, a different layout. It's going to really lend itself to collaborative learning, and it'll support our after-school tutorial as well. So we have a lot going on. I actually have some, a copy of our recent letter that we sent out to the school families for each of the councilmembers, as well as for Mr. Hall, that has some renderings of the library project for your perusal. And with that, I'm going to welcome the Chair of the Board and founding, one of the founding members of the San Clemente Educational Foundation twenty-five years ago, Mr. Jim Sigafus.
Thank you. So Mayor Duncan, councilmembers, and Mr. Hall, and citizens, I guess city staff, I mentioned everybody. It's particularly gratifying to me because, as Linda said, I was not just the current chairman, but also the founding president of the San Clemente Education Foundation, and I've been here to see the whole twenty-five years. And so when I receive, when I represent the, the foundation for this honor, I think of all the people, all of past board members, current board members, past board members, and well over a hundred volunteers that have worked very diligently to make sure that we, we have raised these funds in support of our students. So thank you very much. I would also be remiss if I didn't mention the other important component of our, of our foundation, and that is our over two thousand donors. And every year, they generously, generously come forward and open up their billfolds, and I, I believe I'm accurate when I say that over twenty-five years, every single year, we've raised more than the, than the prior year. So I think that's an impressive record. Now, we cheated a little bit in the COVID year because Raindrop Sandals unsolicited gave us fifty thousand, and I think that put us over the, put us over the hump of, of a little better from the prior year. But in any case, we, we have been very successful, and it's been a win, a winning combination for our, our students of San Clemente High School. So thank you.
Do you have time for a photo? Could I invite the other board members over here?
Sorry, should have introduced our, our other board members over here.
I know some of these folks. Come on up. Yeah, we, well, happy twenty-five to the, to the ed foundation. You know, as a parent of three kids in our schools, and a son of a, you know, the, the son of a, a schoolteacher myself, this, these kind of foundations are absolutely instrumental, right? Where parents get together and supporters of education get together and make sure that our schools are as productive as they possibly can be. Maybe one day we'll pass a bond to ease, to ease some of the burden on this ed foundation and, and fund some of these projects at our school, which we, we absolutely have an obligation to do. Do we want to read this, or do we want to take a picture first? You're up here, Mike. Okay, I'll read this quickly and get up there. All right. Whereas, the City of San Clemente High School Education Foundation's mission is to preserve, support, and enhance academic opportunities and develop and maintain educational programs for all students at San Clemente High School. And whereas, the San Clemente High School Education Foundation is an all-volunteer organization, and whereas over two million dollars has been donated to San Clemente High School since the inception of the San Clemente High School Education Foundation. Wow. And whereas, the San Clemente High School Education Foundation's funds, funds multiple programs which benefit students and teacher training, such as Councilmember Ann Meyer, he needs all the training he can get. Whereas, the San Clemente High School Education Foundation was founded in nineteen ninety-seven and is celebrating its twenty-fifth anniversary. Now therefore, I, Chris Duncan, Mayor of the City of San Clemente, California, acting on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend the San Clemente High School Education Foundation on the occasion of its twenty-fifth anniversary and extend our thanks for being such an integral part of San Clemente. Thank you, Jim and Linda, and everybody else.
Mayor, can I say a quick word?
Yeah.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Ms. Sigafus up there was my past teacher, and so this was a great opportunity to house, to see you up here, and the Educational Foundation does so much for San Clemente High School. I have personally benefited from it, and I just want to say, our public education is the bedrock of our democracy and our democratic institutions of this nation. So thank you for all that you do for the city and for the high school. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. I don't know that he was... Didn't know there was going to be an introduction tonight, but this is my boss.
You're going to have questions for him, too, right?
This is my boss. This is Andrew Assuncheon. He runs the Southwest Division. He's in charge of seven contract cities down here in South County, including San Clemente.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Really appreciate you coming in today. Captain Christian does a great job. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Give him a good evaluation.
Yes. Give him a raise.
All right. Next item on the agenda, oral communications. I will call out the first three speakers. Concerned resident, followed by Lois McNichol, followed by George Gregory.
These are not residents on San Grogonio, but folks trying to use San Grogonio Park. Safety. How many times has this in previous councils publicly proclaimed that the safety of San Clemente residents is your top priority? A public safety issue is on tonight's agenda. Unfortunately, it is not about the safety of San G Park users or the neighboring surroundings. A safety issue that has been brought to your attention repeatedly over several years, and yet this continues. BPNR continues to fail miserably when it comes to managing San G Park. Pickleball and sport organizations are bringing in non-residents and have turned San G into a regional park. I like the smirk, Mr. Mayor. San G was built as a community park, and its activities are for San Clemente residents. It does not have the infrastructure for a regional park, which is clearly evident by the overpacking and unsafe conditions that exist today. Our new city manager, Mr. Hall, is more than capable to restore San G to a community park and comply with the requirements set forth when the park was built, but you need to give him the authority to fix what was wrongfully done by staff and a previous council. The city and its tax dollars need to stop providing for neighboring pickleball players or any sport player in any community park, especially those located in a residential area off a quiet residential street with no safe sidewalks. It is time to stop giving priority to any special interest group, when pacifying them comes at a cost to the safety and quality of life of tax-paying residents. It's time to make decisions based on who's right for San Clemente residents, not non-residents. It's time for those of you who are using your seat on this council for your own political gain. It's time to stop. Thank you.
Lois McNichol, followed by George Gregory, followed by Bill Crutenger.
Hi. Well, I noticed that there are a number of legislative bills on the agenda this week. I did not see, however, SCA 2 on the agenda. And that is very important, because that would take all of the rights of the city council and take them all away, and they would all be given to the state. And the state would say, okay, we're going to put these centers here or there, and you have nothing to say about it. And that's exactly what it would do, because it would repeal Article 34 of the California Constitution. So, therefore, I did not see that on there, and that I find very distressing, because you seem to follow the bills very carefully. The other one is, I don't see anybody talking about the wonderful idea of our governor to pay reparations. So, that's another thing to think about.
George Gregory.
Hello, Council. Thanks for having me. Criminal, North Beach. We're spending an awful lot of money, I don't think we have, right now, on pickleball, for one thing. It's about half a million dollars ahead, behind me. The homeless collaborations, talking about $180,000 a door? A door? $180,000 a door? I wish my life was so expensive. I know I wouldn't be here. I'd be out enjoying myself. And community development still doesn't have the tools to get some things built in this town. I have a large lot. I have a little duplex on it. I would like to divide the lot and build a conforming duplex. We can't do that. So, I have to go into low-income housing or into ADUs, which I'd rather not do. For one thing, it messes up my existing paperwork. And for another thing, I don't think it's a good thing for the neighborhood to bring that kind of density with no justifiable parking. The duplex, I would try to build up on the hill. The parking wouldn't count, because you can't tandem park anything over two units. So, in other words, if you had the room to build tandem parking for units, you can't do that if it's over two units. So, anyways, we really need to work on some things that are more important. Also, Casa Romanica and stuff's going to cost a ton of money. And let's face it, it's already cost a ton of money. I mean, they had to have the decomposed granite parking lot. They just had to have it. And then it got ripples and little rivers and stuff put in it from the rain, obviously. So, then they asphalted it. It was another ton of money. So, I suggest, Mr. Hall, that we put out some naming rights to the building and get out of my pocket. Hopefully, we can find somebody who will give us some naming rights for the building and get out of my pocket. Because however we do that, I'm sure it's going to be caissons and buttresses and all kinds of fancy stuff for words of large amounts of concrete. The whole thing was kind of a jaded deal to begin with. It ran over budget and stuff. It's like the pool house. The pool house cost us $7 million on something that was supposed to cost 1.1. What did that develop? Is it a pool I can use? No. It's a business for somebody who does weddings there, who takes away the lawn from us, who takes away access to the pool from us. So, their business can thrive, but our citizens can't. Citizens first. Please, citizens first. So, really think about these couple of things I'm bringing to you, because we need a little fiscal conservancy would be a smart thing, especially if you've been watching the markets and the banks and all that kind of stuff. So, anyways, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Bill Crutenger, followed by Charles Bolt, followed by Amanda Q.
Good evening, City Council and staff. I'm Bill Crutenger, Technical Director of Tri-Cities RACIS. I'm here for a couple of reasons. First, I'd like to report that at the May 6 auxiliary communications exercise run by the county, Tri-Cities RACIS, serving San Juan Capistrano, Dana Point, and San Clemente, performed as we have for the last few years that I've been involved, very well. We checked all the boxes, and everyone can kind of rest easy knowing that there are dedicated volunteers with tested equipment standing by to provide emergency communication services to the city. I also... I don't want to get into an item on the agenda, but item I is something that I know the Public Safety Committee worked on for a long time, and it's great to see it come to fruition. At the February 2022 meeting of the Public Safety Committee, there was a recommendation for the city council to support getting some equipment for Tri-Cities RACIS set up in the city, and I hope that that can also move forward in the months ahead. If anyone has questions about Tri-Cities RACIS and what we do, you can... I think you all know how to reach me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Bolt, followed by Amanda Q.
Good evening. Just a gentle reminder that I am the squeaky wheel. I came a couple meetings ago and spoke to you about miniature golf courses. I understand we've got some progress in that arena, and I want to encourage you to keep moving forward with it. This is the longest construction in the history of mankind, 15 years to finish Hermosa Park. We've been using it quite heavily over the last 15 years, but there's a section that still weeds. We need to finish it, ladies and gentlemen. If you know the reason, then just put a check on the list and say, "The park is now done." Thank you.
Hello, council members. I think I have a presentation. Next slide, please. So, on May 8, the OCTA Board approved the 2045 final draft of the LRTP. A couple months ago, it was the interim city manager, Mr. Joyce, that mentioned that the OCTA was going to be coming to our city to talk about the 2045 LRTP draft, and they haven't. So, I'm also concerned about why our city's transportation consultant didn't inform the city that it was on the OCTA Board agenda for May 8. Next slide, please. So, it's unfortunate that our city did not inform the public to submit public comments as well for the 2045 LRTP draft. And the 2045 determined that there was going to be one managed lane on either side, and this doesn't come as a surprise, because it's something that was in their proposal before. However, in the previous LRTP, it was determined that managed lanes do not meet the federal guidelines with HOV 2-plus lanes or HOV 3-plus lanes, which were overused, and tolling lanes show that they would be underused. Next slide, please. I'm concerned of why it says "future of the toll roads." And coordinate with Caltrans District 12 and TCA to plan for toll road improvements and operational approaches on the toll road corridors related to the state assuming full control of the facilities. So, I'm concerned about what "full control of the facilities" means in terms of the TCA. Next slide. District 12 consists of 35 cities, plus the OCTA, and then also the TCA. Next slide, please. Mr. Johnson put out a letter, and he's the OCT CEO, and it mentions that the final draft was finalized and was submitted to the Southern California Association of Governments, and so for their approval. Next slide. So, my question is, did our city submit a response to the 2045 LRTP draft? We were not informed that we were able to do that, because the focus at that time was only a survey, and to basically be in a teleconference where we could just ask questions, and a couple of people did. Eight comment letters were received from the state and local agencies. Next slide, please. And lastly, the land use concerns from... It showed that there was land use concerns from three of the four commenting local jurisdictions, but that was in relation to transit improvements. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That is all I have for oral communications. So, moving on, do we have a motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
I'll second.
Motion is no lock. Second, Cabral, all in fair. Aye. It's unanimous.
Consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action?
Seeing none.
Closed session report, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Council met in closed session. Is that better?
Yes.
Council met in closed session on the City of San Clemente versus Foothill Eastern Transportation Corridor, two cases listed. There was direction given and no reportable action. Council also met in closed session on City of San Clemente versus Emergency Shelter Coalition, case listed in the agenda. There's no reportable action. Thank you.
Staff communications. Don't believe we have any tonight. Moving on to consent.
I thought we did have...
I think that the city engineer was going to provide an update on...
Oh, yes.
Here it goes. She was moving quickly.
Yes, he's slow. Put him on the clock. Mr. Coger, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Kyle Coger, Public Works Director. I'm going to give you a quick update on the Casa Romanica landslide for the last two weeks since we last spoke. The geotechnical work, we completed our second sole boring in the parking lot on May 2. The inclinometer at the rear of the building still shows no signs of movement so far, so that's a good thing. And we also have seen no noticeable movement of the landslide slope for about a week. We continue to share information with OCTA and MetroLink. As far as the Reef Gate buildings, we removed all red tags, except for the four units at the southern end on May 9. And we removed all yellow tags, which were four yellow tags, from Building B at the east building on May 9. The Casa Romanica building is currently still yellow-tagged with conditions to stay out of certain areas, but those folks can still go to work every day. And as far as the emergency slope stabilization repairs, we started that work on Friday, May 12. The contractor will be working for probably about two weeks. We're going to remove soil from the north end of the landslide area and up against the Reef Gate building to relieve pressure. Some soil will be hauled off the site, and some other soil will be used to stabilize the vertical slope right by the Casa building. And we notified the Coastal Commission last week that we would be starting this work. As far as OCTA and MetroLink, we've been coordinating our efforts with both agencies. We're meeting daily to report progress and updates. The freight trains are running at night, so as not to conflict with the slope stabilization work. There's no passenger train service at this time, and the OCTA is working on retaining wall to protect their tracks, which is still a few weeks out, I believe. That's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any estimate on passenger rail starting again?
I'm meeting daily with them, but I asked the question about their wall, and I think they're still a month out. That's just a guess.
A month out from installing the wall, or...
Yes.
Okay. And once that is installed, then they would presumably start...
I think so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah. Could you tell me more about the wall that they're proposing for the public's...
I've seen just a draft version of it. It would run the entire length of the failed slope area. And it's... I'm calling it a retaining wall. It's really more of a containment wall, so if any other soil were to come down, it would protect their tracks. They're in the early stages of figuring it out, so they... Like I said, I don't know much more than that. I think the work that we're doing right now, and what we're doing over the next two weeks, is going to secure the slope until we can get permanent repairs in there.
And the Reef Gate, have we started moving that soil yet?
Not yet.
But we're...
We worked on access issues on Friday. Monday, we were still working on some access issues, building ramps down to the slope, and today we started moving a little material and taking away some landscaping materials, removing some of the gates and fences that were there, the concrete debris, that type of thing.
Now, what OCTA and MetroLink is doing, is that their preliminary first step, or do they have a larger plan that we're privy to?
I think that's going to be their first and last step, to put in the containment wall, and the work that we're doing, it should fix it.
All right. Thank you.
A question. You mentioned that you notified the Coastal Commission about the soil remediation work. Is a permit required at all by the Coastal Commission?
Yes, sir. We still need to file an emergency coastal development permit, and I haven't done that yet, but the first step, just notify them, and they were okay with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Appreciate it. Thanks, Kyle.
Moving on to consent calendar, we do have several items pulled by the public.
I'd met with them, I'm meeting daily with them, but I asked the question about their, their wall, and I think they're still a month out. That's just a guess.
A month out from installing the wall, or?
Yes.
Okay, but, and once that is installed, then they would presumably start?
I think so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, could you tell me more about the, the wall that they're proposing?
I've seen just a draft version of it. It would run the entire length of the failed slope area. And it's, it's, I'm calling it retaining wall. It's really more of a containment wall, so if any other soil were to, were to come down, it would protect their tracks. They're, they're in the early stages of figuring it out, so they, like I said, I don't know much more than that. I think the work that we're doing right now and what we're doing over the next two weeks is going to secure the slope until we can get permanent repairs in there.
And the Reef Gate, have we started moving that?
Not yet.
Soil yet, but we're?
We, we worked on access issues on Friday. Monday, we were still working on some access issues, building ramps down to the slope, and today we started moving a little material and taking away some landscaping materials, removing some of the gates and fences that, that were there, the concrete debris, that type of thing.
Now, what OCTA and MetroLink is doing, is that their preliminary first step, or do they have a larger plan that we're privy to?
I think that's going to be their, their first and last step to put in the containment wall, and the work that we're doing, it should fix it.
All right, thank you.
A question, you, you mentioned that you notified the coastal commission about the soil remediation work. Is a permit required at all by the coastal commission?
Yes, sir. We still need to file an emergency coastal development permit, and I haven't done that yet, but the first step, just notify them, and they were okay with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Appreciate it. Thanks, Kyle.
Moving on to consent calendar, we do have several items pulled by the public. Item 7E has been pulled, 7F, 7G, 7I, and 7K. 7E, isn't Edward?
Mayor, to add?
EF.
E, F, G, I, and K.
And mayor and council, if you would consider, staff would like to continue item K for additional study and bring back more information on the possibility of using our own staff rather than contractors and give you that option, so when you get to that point.
Let's, let's get back to that when we get to it. Does any count, we have E, F, G, I, and K. I and K. Do we have any council members that are, that would like any of the other items pulled?
Nope.
I'm going to pull H. And does somebody want to move the balance?
I'll move the balance. Second?
Motion is no block to move the balance. Second is Enmire, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it's unanimous.
Okay, item 7E, consideration of supporting Assembly Bill 882. And would you like to hear the speaker comments first, since it was pulled by the public?
Yes.
Okay, Amanda Q.
Great, next slide, please. Thank you. So, I'm in support of Assemblywoman Lori Davis's AB 882. This was a brief legislation that was, has been streamlined, and what it does is it modifies an existing law to allow state-funded assistant grants to be paid in advance to agency or, and non-governmental agencies. Existing laws cap advanced payments to a maximum of 25% of the total grant. AB 882 allows local governments and/or NGOs to have this funding early to allow it to engage in implementation and development plans, such as staffing and lay vital groundwork before engaging in its plans. The voting history of this bill, which I looked up before I came, passed the Assembly Natural Resources with 11 votes yes and no votes. It's currently been re-referred to the Committee on Appropriations, and I definitely support this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? No, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation of the letter of support.
Second.
Okay, motion is no block. Second is Cabral, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There's no opposed.
Next item pulled by the public, item 7F, consideration of supporting California Assembly Bill 966, and this was pulled by Amanda Q.
Should have stayed right up there, Amanda.
I know. And it's funny because I can't find my paperwork on this, so I'm kind of going to add a little bit. Next slide, please. So, basically, and so I am in support of Assemblywoman Lori Davis's AB 966, which modifies and deletes parts of the proposed section and of the harbors and navigation code. Specifically, it adds the statute sections that addresses shoreline erosion control and, and public beaches. It requires an agency to develop and conduct beach erosion studies and solutions by 2025. And the, what's, what's, next slide, please. And so, there is an end date on this, and the background for this was introduced back in 2023. And the Division of Boating and Waterways is a sub-branch of the Department of Parks and Recreation, so they are the ones that would be involved in this, in charge of that. One of its duties is to study and monitor beach erosion methods and stabilize beach and shore, beach and shorelines. And it's important to note that, of course, we already have experienced several landslides at Buena Vista and Casa Romantica, and then also, I think, La Paloma, that there's concerns regarding that. Next slide, please. So, existing law authorizes the department to cooperate with all relevant agencies and of government for purposes of beach erosion control and stabilization. And existing law, subject to funding availability, including the department's management of any federal funds. Next slide, please. And basically, this puts a deadline for the Department of Boating and Waterways to prepare and submit a joint study in cooperation with the state coastal conservancy. This report is to be submitted no later than January 25, so there is a deadline. The bill would require the report to discuss existing programs, evaluate the need for continued projects, and program application requirements. The bill, the bill would repeal and provision, provisions on January 1, 2026, so it is a one-time study and not a continuous obligation to the department. So, I think that's very important to note. The, it, right now, it has been re-referred to the Committee on Appropriations with recommendation. And it was passed at 15 yes and no opposition to that vote. Next slide, please, and I think I'm pretty much towards, and why it's important, it discusses ways to increase natural sediment supply in order to decrease the need to nourish the state's beaches and an analysis of specific locations where structures may be removed or modified. So, it identifies the beaches of the state that contain a critically eroded shoreline, and so I think this is very important. It's critically necessary at this point, and I think we need to all come together and support Assemblywoman Lori Davis's bill. I think, next slide, and I think that's it. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll move that we authorize mayor to execute the letter of support.
I just have a comment first. I just, I, I think this will complement what we're doing at the city and what the county is also doing, and so I support it, so I'm an aye too.
Yeah, wish we had done this a couple of years ago. Okay. Go ahead.
So, I'll, I'll move that we authorize mayor to execute the letter of support for AB 966.
Second.
Motion is Enmire, second. It is no block, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous. On to G.
Consideration of providing a letter of support for California Senate Bill 337, and the speaker is Amanda Q.
Okay, so I'm concerned regarding Senate Bill 337. When this first came out, I was concerned that it was just a, a land grab, and I'm still concerned regarding that. I'm concerned about the impact of our mitigated lands and our open spaces that are protected under ballot measure V. And I'm just kind of wondering, does this bill supersede that ballot measure and take away our local control? Also, does it take or, over our open spaces? So, that's a concern there. I'm also concerned regarding the impact of coastal waters and the fishing industry and how that impacts. So, I'm really concerned about that. When reading the, the legislative analysis, the bill does not define the term conserve, and I think that is something that is really a major concern. When looking at the votes that were done on the Senate floor yesterday, Senator Janet Wynn voted no. Senator Wynn has supported the efforts of Senator Bates' bills in the past and that protect our open spaces and and, of course, they protected us or tried to protect us from the toll roads that would go through our open spaces and mitigated lands and establish communities, business parks, and recreation centers. So, I am, I'm in opposition of this. I'm confident in Senator Janet, Janet Wynn's opinion of why she voted no or why she voted no, and I think that at this time, I suggest that the city manager, manager or our transportation subcommittee can reach out to Senator Janet Wynn to discuss the concerns that she had in her vote as a no vote. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one more speaker card. Don Brown?
Good evening, everybody. I, I took a look at Senate Bill 337 earlier today, and I, I reached out to some of you. If you look at the text of the message, of the Senate bill as proposed, I don't know if Laura can bring it up or for your purview, we had a chance to. But you read down to the bottom line, it just says, pass SB whatever, and let's restrict 30% of our waters and 30% of our open land. Period. 2014, as we passed, finished up our, our general plan, we worked into, because we were late, on our housing element with SB 2. SB 2 required us to zone an area in the city for the homeless. The Senate bill, SB 2, that passed that said the same thing. We'll, you'll zone an area, and you will make sure that it happens ministerially, administratively, no. And then, then what, it popped, it went over the fence to Housing and Community Development, who passed 68 pages of implementing instructions. We got to deal with that 68 pages. I was on the planning commission when we dealt with it, and we zoned an area. The city council overrode that, made it a ministerial activity with city lands. We got sued, and a million dollars in that, of that lawsuit is still pending, and we're still being sued over it to this day because they're, they're trying to get a homeless development down in this, in the area across from our high school. So, be careful what you vote for. What it says in that implementing instruction, and Andy's written a great little staff report for you, when you look, go below it, everything else is X-ed out. And all it says is, pass SB 337, restrict 30% of our coastal areas and 30% of our open zone by 2030. Be careful what, one of the parties they're going to give it to is the coastal commission. Wonder how those amplifying instructions are going to be in two or three years when this council or your predecessor or successors are going to have to deal with it. I've been there. I've dealt with it. It's ugly. So, I, I'm sorry, I looked at it in the top level, and my wife said, yeah, vote for it. All right, now go look at the details in the staff report, and it is not pretty. It's, it's undefined, so be careful what you're going to get. So, I recommend you do not support SB 337. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No additional speaker.
Oh, we have another one?
No, I'm sorry, no additional speaker.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we table this item. Take no action on it.
Okay, before we, well, is there a second on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, and before we vote on it, is there any discussion that people want to have?
I think reason why I'm looking at, at tabling this is concern at our, our beach erosion itself. Would this limit our ability to place like a groin or to place a, any thing that would help us with, with mitigating sand depletion? That's, that's my concern here, so that's why I want to look a little bit more into it. What specifics are, are they looking at here in terms of the beach itself? And what would, what would it limit us in doing in order to preserve our beaches?
Yeah. Right, okay. Go ahead.
Actually, I'm, I'm prepared to oppose it. I, I like all the objectives of, of the legislation. I just think this should remain with the city, not with the state. I mean, that's been my guiding principle, is keep as much control as we can for the state. I believe in, you know, preserving open spaces and protecting our beaches, and I think everybody on the city council does. But we should be the deciders of what that is, not the state of California, not someone sitting in Sacramento that's never been to San Clemente. So, I, I would like to oppose this legislation, but if, if all we can do right now is table it, that's, that's fine, and hopefully.
Do you want to make a substitute motion?
I'll make a substitute motion to just opposes this, this legislation.
Okay, any seconds?
I, I support the motion. Madam city attorney, am I conflicted out by having endorsed the first motion?
No.
I'll support that motion because I, the, the concern's the same. We don't know, we don't have any idea what the state will propose or has proposed or intends on proposing when it talks about limiting the, the coastal land use or water use. So, until we know more details, I have no problem opposing it. So, I'll second that motion.
All right, then the substitute motion goes first. Okay. So, we're voting on the substitute motion to, to write a letter of opposition?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Enmire?
No.
Councilmember Cabral?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Miller? And I'm a no, so that, that fails two to two. And now on to the motion to table, which I support because I just, I don't have enough information on this, and I have gotten a lot of requests to table because people have concerns, but they want to make sure we know about them. So, on that motion, Councilmember Enmire?
Yes.
Cabral?
Table, I, I support the table motion.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's unanimous.
The only, the only, I, I might say, the only way we're going to know what's in it is once there's a report done after it's passed. So, we will not know until it's passed, so you may never be able to vote on this because we will never know what, what those regulations are going to be.
I'd, I'd just like to hear more information from the folks who felt like they need, that they had more of an explanation, so.
Didn't our Speaker of the House one time say, you have to pass the bill before you can read it? I have a vague recollection of that.
I don't remember that one. Moving on to G?
H, you, you pulled H, mayor.
Oh, no, G, G wasn't pulled.
That was.
No, that was G, oh, that was G, okay. Okay, H, yeah, so H, Mr. Coger coming up. So, my concern with H, because, you know, I like the agreement we have with the OCTA to use their right-of-way for the fabulous beach trail. But my concern with, with the new agreement is that unlike the old agreement, which was straight 20 years, so we had predictability, we know we were going to be using it for 20 years. This one has no timeframe and is renewed annually, right? So, I don't, I'm not, I don't believe OCTA is trying to angle us out and maybe double-track in the beach trailer. I hope that's not what they're going to, they're doing. But, but it bothers me that they changed the term this time, and instead of that predictable 20 years, so we both know what's going to be happening, it's renewed annually, it can be canceled by either party, you know, within that year. So, they could, they could pull the plug on it, it seems, at any time. But we may be in a bad position to negotiate, so. Yes, Mr. Coger?
Are we going to, oh.
Yeah, we'll, we'll hear from him, and then we'll, I'm just, I'm just giving the reasons why I polled it. Yeah.
I asked them today, and they said that we can renegotiate that. If that's not something you're comfortable with, I can go back and we can look at a, a longer term. I do think the reason that they did it this way is just so, it's basically in perpetuity, and so we just wouldn't have to go back and renew it ever again. They, they know how important the beach trail is to us. They know how many amenities, you know, bridges and, and the trail and everything that we've put there, so. But if you're not, not happy with it, we can definitely go back and negotiate a longer term.
Okay.
If I can say one other thing, I believe the last agreement also said where either party could get out of it within 30 days. That's the way this reads as well, so I still think they could get out, you know, just throwing it out there.
Okay, yes.
So, the functional difference between a 20-year agreement is this one just renews forever, as long as no one disagrees, no one chooses to get out of it.
That's right.
And either of us, either the city or they could get out of it with 30 days' notice.
That's right.
And that was true before.
Yes, sir.
So, it's, this might even be a, a better term. It's an unlimited term.
Seems strange, though. I mean, that, that term canceled by either party is attached to the one-year renewal term, as if it has greater meaning than, because it, it would seem to be duplicative if, if you could get out of it in 30 days or cancel it within 30 days, right? So, there's got to be some difference between those two terms.
We're operating in their right-of-way, and so I, I think if they need to, need it at any time, they want to be able to, to get it back, but I don't think that's their intention.
Okay, okay. Okay, go ahead.
So, so let me ask you this. What would be their anticipated need? Do you have any idea of what they may need it for or, or want it for, or would come in and say, oh, the OCTA, I mean, railroad, anything like that, or?
I don't anticipate anything, but, you know, I don't work for them either, so.
All right, okay, thank you.
not sure what their intentions are.
Your understanding of the prior agreement was anytime in that 20 years, they could have notified us, "Hey, we're taking this land back"?
I believe that all they had to do is give us 30 days' notice.
All right.
I, what's the benefit of doing this once a year as opposed to once every 20 years?
From my point of view, it's just easier. If it automatically renews, we don't have to worry about, you know, I know 20, you know, wait 20 years to renew an agreement. It's not that big of a deal. But I think it's just something they wanted to do to say, "Okay, it's just automatically renewed. We don't need to come back unless there's an issue somewhere down the road."
I mean, what about a five-year?
I can go back and negotiate. They said they would be willing to do it. The current agreement expires, I believe it's June 30th. So I can try and work something out, or we can, we can, we could do an amendment to the existing agreement to give us a little bit more time. I can go back and see what they're comfortable with and bring that back to you guys if you'd like.
I had the same concerns, but the explanation, I appreciate Kyle, the explanation that the both agreements had a 30-day opt-out. I would be more comfortable with a five- or seven-year automatic renewal. I would like it if it was another 21, but obviously they want to have access. My concern was the same thing. If the OCTA decided they wanted to do double-tracking or do something that would be an impediment to our wonderful crown jewel of San Clemente, it would be problematic. But I wouldn't object to asking them to extend that for a regular, for a longer period of time, five or seven years, let's say.
Yeah. Can we ask, and if we have time to do that, you can just bring it back and put it back on a consent if they would agree to that.
Okay.
I'd like a motion that we ask them to renegotiate for that time.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we need a motion on that, or?
Yeah, let's do a motion so it's clear.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we instruct staff to renegotiate for a five-to-seven-year extension period for this lease.
Second. Okay. It's Mayor Protimnobok, second is Anmeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of adopting a resolution approving a license agreement with Abound Food Care for Emergency Meal Storage. And this was pulled by the public. Lois McNichol is the speaker.
Hi. Yeah, I guess I just need more information about exactly what this is going to mean for, because we just got over the North Beach issue of having people come down there and bring food for the homeless. So what is this issue about proving a life with the Abound Food Care for Emergency Meal Storage? What kind of emergency meals are we talking about? I mean, for 20 years, for like, emergency meals, like say, there's a nuclear bomb going to go off, or are we talking emergency meals for people who don't have any food? I'm not sure what that means. And it's not really explained here.
We can't come in back during the comment period.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Anyway, so that's my issue, because whenever I see, and of course, whenever I see it on PICO, then all of that does, I get very interested because I live very close to there, and I live in North Beach. So I was very aware of what was happening there before. So that's why this is, this does not seem to have a, it needs more of an explanation. That's all I want to say.
Any other comments? Okay.
No additional comments.
Any discussion, or anybody have a motion on this one?
I have a discussion. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say I oppose this the way it's been presented. I, for the life of me, don't understand why we would want to build this. There's not enough information in the report about what it is. We're not getting paid for it. I mean, that's valuable land. Unless we're getting paid for it, maybe someone could correct me, if we're going to get something for this valuable land, or are we giving it away?
So it's a nonprofit that's working through the county to provide emergency meals. So in a time of disaster, let's say we have an earthquake, and we have a large percentage of our population that needs meals, this will be a resource. It's a cold storage facility with meals ready to eat. It holds about 20,000 meals, and the Abound Food Care would be running it. They will install it, maintain it, operate it. They won't use any city electricity. It's a solar-powered unit on top of a, basically a Conex box.
Yeah.
So.
And what are we, what are we getting for this?
It's, well, it'll be for our residents. In case of disaster in our city, we'll have storage of meals ready to eat that we can pass out to our residents.
This might have come before the new council, but we had, I believe it was you, Rick, from Public Safety Committee, had said that the bound had approached us and said, "Hey, you know, if you can give us this little plot of land, we'll help you out and put this emergency food thing. If you're so far down here in the county, it's hard for resources to get to you. So, and if there's an emergency earthquake, tsunami, or something, then you'll have a source of food for your residents and visitors and not have to have it trucked in from somewhere else in the county."
How much food?
20,000 meals.
And how often will that food be changed out?
Well, whenever the expiration date comes out, they will.
Is it like 40 years expiration? Is it, what's expiration on it?
Three months, maybe.
So every three months, we'll be giving that food away?
Right, and replenishing with new food.
Okay.
Giving the food away. No, they're not giving it away like in the area. They're moved, it's spoiled, so they're taking it to the grain.
Actually, I have someone from Abound Food Care that could probably answer some of these questions.
Yeah, sure. Sure, sure. I like that. This is not food giveaways for unhoused people.
No, this, so the meals that are in there are made from excess edible food from.
Who is the speaker? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Kate Albrecht. I am the executive coordinator for Abound Food Care. I'm here on behalf of our CEO, Michael Iarocas, who I believe met with Mayor Duncan last year. That was our representative at the time. And the meals that are in the unit are made from excess edible food that are repurposed and vacuum-sealed, frozen into individual meals for families, individuals, whoever is hungry. And as we rotate out the meals, when we freeze them, they are given a year extended shelf life. So as they're rotated out, we work with nonprofits in San Clemente and outside of San Clemente, FAM, being one of our great partners that we work with, to get these meals to, that then they're able to go out in their own communities to food insecure communities in need. So it keeps a steady amount of meals in the unit, but then also, as they are being replenished, they are going out from the unit to nonprofits in the area. So this unit is not open to the public for anybody to come to. This is between our city representative, Abound Food Care, and Emergency Systems. COVID taught us a lot when the pandemic happened, and so many people were hungry and needed food immediately. So this is an emergency meal program that we've created that's funded by the county that keeps a steady source of meals ready in case of an emergency for the residents of San Clemente, and also keeps meals going to nonprofits in need as they reach their date.
And what kind of food is this, just out of curiosity?
Like breakfast, lunch, dinner. It's, all have to meet nutritional guidelines, so they have to have the right amount of nutrition within each meal. We work with nutritionists. We work with chefs to be able to use this excess edible food to create meals.
So it says.
And then, oh, sorry.
It says here in the agreement that you will be solely responsible for managing and distributing the meals pursuant to your own policies, with the city having no input as to what happens to this food. Is that right?
Well, we're more than willing to work with the city on if there are nonprofits in mind that they would like the food to go to, if they have areas in need. We've had a great relationship with San Clemente for very many years, and already navigating the nonprofit landscape of where the greatest need is, which is how we were able to find this location and working with the Public Safety Committee.
What about the neighbors in that area? Have they been advised of what's being built there?
No, but it is a very small facility, and we do think we can tuck it. We have trees in this area that we plan on tucking it, tugging it behind, so it shouldn't. We already have other construction equipment, materials. It's not a real attractive-looking area to begin with, so.
What else do we have on that site?
We have construction equipment. We have soil, Conex boxes, other storage trailers.
Tell, one more question for you. Tell me about your company, what you do generally day-to-day.
Sure.
And the company itself, or the organization?
So we are a California nonprofit, and how we got started was to find a solution between food waste and food insecurity, and legislation SB 1383, which is all about excess edible food waste. So that's going to be from distributors, schools, hospitals. California has to decrease the amount of excess edible food that they're throwing away and sending to landfill. Good excess edible food, edible excess edible food, nothing spoiled. It has to meet food safety requirements. So what we do is we help jurisdictions and donors, nonprofits, everyone in this space to be able to create food care programs, which is going to be edible food recovery solutions, whether that is starting a program, implementing emergency meals, which is a program we created during COVID, as a solution as well to this excess edible food, that it was able to be repurposed into meals to also be used in an emergency.
So all your programs are storage, like you're doing in San Clemente, or do you have other programs?
We have very, we have a lot of programs.
Can you tell me about all the other programs?
Sure. Yeah, I hope, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but absolutely. So we institute programs that create food recovery programs, so connecting donors with nonprofits in their area, keeping them in compliance with food waste legislation. We also have solutions based on food repurposing kitchens, so taking existing businesses or schools, a lot of, we work with a lot of culinary programs in which they are able to take this excess edible food and learn how to create meals with it. So it does job creation, it does culinary training. We have our solar-powered units, which can be used to house all these excess edible meals safely. Like I said again, really hitting on food safety requirements. They have to be kept at certain temperatures and have to have quality control checks regularly. And we also work within nonprofit education, so teaching nonprofits on how to receive excess edible food, getting them connected to different organizations in their community if they need, if they need equipment, if they need more volunteers, if they need to be part of Feeding America, and also an enhanced procurement program, which helps bring together food banks and nonprofits to source and pool money so that they're able to use the best resources for those who need it.
Have you ever looked at San Clemente food distribution programs? Do you know how many exist, or the actual need for another program?
I, for the emergency meals, yes. We haven't been able to find one that is really based in San Clemente, especially in case of an emergency. FAM has been a great partner of ours working on this, that we're able to connect with a lot of different agencies who are doing distribution in San Clemente, but none currently house those meals that are ready to go in a crisis or are using the excess edible repurposed meals. It's more of large-scale donations that are just.
What did we, and this may be for either of you, what kind of study did we do, or how, what kind of emergency are we looking at that we would need all this food? 20,000, that we're going to have 20,000 people in San Clemente come and eat a meal?
We have about 65,000 residents, so if we have a 9.0 earthquake, we're going to need supplies for sure.
Okay.
20,000 meals is not going to go very far if there's a lot of people that are out of their homes or whatnot. The Public Safety Committee looked into this, I'm guessing maybe a year ago, and it was also, I think they brought it to council to their presentation. I believe a planning staff brought it to council as well to ask, "Do we want to go forward with an agreement?", and that was voted on, yes. And so I'm, that's what I'm doing tonight, is bringing the agreement back. So it has been vetted.
Okay, we good? The natives are getting restless here.
I have a question.
Okay. You want to talk about food again?
Yeah, I want to talk about food again. The, I had the same concerns about this. You know, when it first came up, I was told, "Well, it's related to the county." Well, the county has, there's zero reference to the county in this. I have no idea what the county standards are, what their oversight is. This is a nonprofit organization, and while the purpose sounds beneficial, sounds like kind of a good idea, but we're not dealing with the county. We're dealing with a nonprofit. And the nonprofit had told us in this agreement that the city has zero discretion, zero role, zero obligation in the management or control of this program. That concerns me because we're giving a valuable city asset for something that might help our citizens, which is good, but we have zero control over how to help our citizens. So I would recommend that we send this back to staff with a little information on where the food goes after it's been held for a period of time, and find out what the county oversight or authorization or sanctioning is of this program overall. I'm not against the concept, but I don't know abundant food, and I've heard the county has blessed it, but I'm not hearing from the county. So I would just ask that the county, that this be referred to staff for further analysis.
I'd second that if that's a motion.
That's a motion.
All right. My substitute motion is to adopt the staff recommendation.
I'll second that. Can I ask on that, on that note, what county oversight do you have on this? Do you have an answer to that concern?
So this is a county-funded grant. They were the ones who gave us the money to fund this program, and so they are who we report back to when we are doing site analysis, when we've done site confirmation, when we have meals that are going out. We help them understand how this program is working, and giving that determination of who we're working with, the nonprofits we're working with, where the locations are. That's, that's the kind of oversight there, and that's how we work with the county within this program. And we're more than willing to go back into the agreement to be able to work, to work more out with it, to bring either more information to it or have further discussion.
Yeah. I would only say, I like the concept. I just don't like losing all control as a city, and that's why I want to look at it, have the staff look at it. But we have a motion on the table right now.
I don't think we want to get in the emergency food distribution and storage business, but if you guys want to vote against providing emergency food for residents, we'll go ahead and do that.
No, that's not, that's not what we said.
It's not a vote against, the motion was not to oppose it. The motion was refer to staff for further analysis.
Okay. This has already been reviewed and vetted multiple times by Planning Commission, Public Safety Committee, and the council, so.
Our staff city manager is here. Is there any questions that you have for the city manager that he could answer right now that?
Be clear.
That would.
It's not clear to me.
Okay.
Well, the questions just simply, the questions deal with, what is the protocol if there were a nine-point earthquake, or a nuclear detonation, or some serious injury, significant trauma to the city? I don't know what it is. The report doesn't say what it is. The report simply says, "Well, we're going to help people that are hungry." Wonderful. That's great. But we're not dealing with the county. The county has zero reference in this. I have absolutely no idea what the county oversight or sanctioning is of this operation. I'd like to know that. And I think staff can look into it and report back in a reasonable time, and hope to God that we don't have a nine-point earthquake or nuclear detonation between now and the time staff reports back.
Well, we have other items to focus on instead of things that have been vetted and pre-approved already. But if you want to go back and talk about this, I mean, I guess we can. But we'll vote on the first motion. Councilmember Anmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cabral?
Your motion?
Yes, my substitute motion to approve the staff recommendation.
No.
Okay.
No.
And I'm an aye, so that fails.
Vote on the.
The other motion is to what? Go ahead and restate your motion.
The motion is to refer this matter to staff for further analysis and report back at a reasonable time with the answers regarding the county involvement, oversight, and the protocol relating to food distribution and the delivery or the moving out of the food once it's lived its three-year, three-month shelf life. Basically, staff for further analysis.
Okay. Councilmember Anmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cabral?
Aye.
Mayor Protimnobok?
Aye.
And I'm a no. I would just approve it. Sorry. Sorry to waste everybody's time. Okay, on to the next one.
Okay. Next item on consent that was pulled by the public is adoption of a resolution awarding a maintenance services agreement to access controlled security to provide parking enforcement services during street sweeping operations. We do have a member of the public that pulled this item, but I believe the city manager also wanted to discuss this item.
Okay. Do we have a comment from the public first? I guess we should take that if we have one.
Amanda Q?
Should have a rolling stool that just kind of guides me up here. So there have been concerns regarding parking enforcement during street sweeping operations. This has been concerns going back to 2019. Street sweeping stopped during COVID-19. And just recently, I was informed that the company that was contracted with the city at the time unfortunately closed its doors because of COVID. And it's sad that. And it's sad that, you know, a couple, many companies had to do that. At the time though, I was informed by the former city manager that they just stopped their services. So, now I'm glad I have a clarification of that. Then it's my understanding that another company took over and it was not profitable for them. And this created problems because without a patrol to ticket vehicles, there was no incentive for residents to move their cars. And this happens because it defeats the purpose of them, for people, you know, for them to street sweep and to make that clean. So, I just feel that at this point, you know, I just want to make sure that whoever is going to be contracted, there are concerns regarding that they're able to ticket, they're able to have sufficient staff. And there was also areas such as around Max Park Park that were, that were not being swept. So, that was another concern because some local residents were concerned about why they were being ticketed versus RVs or other cars that were parked across from Max Park Park and directly right adjacent to Max Park Park. So, I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? No.
No further comments.
Okay. City manager.
Yes, if we can continue this item, there were some issues raised that we would like to explore a little bit further. Maybe the possibility of actually having our own staff expanded to do this. So, if you'll give us an opportunity to bring this back with some additional information, staff would appreciate it.
I think that's an excellent idea. I like the concept of, of considering using our staff instead of paying outsiders to do this relatively easy job that is a revenue generator. And staff could use that person for this function and potentially many other functions. So, I would make a motion that we refer this back to staff for analysis and to report back at a convenient time.
I'll second that. Okay, motion is no block, second is Cabral. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? No.
Okay. Moving on from consent to new business, we have no public hearings tonight.
Uh, we have a motion to move item C up to the top of new business here. We have a lot of red shirts here and. They've been waiting quite a while. They, they know a lot about emergency food now. But let's, uh, let's, let's see if, what do you think? Okay.
I support that.
You want to?
It's second, I'll second.
Okay, all right. So, well, let's see, no block with the motion, and Meyer with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll start with C. Sorry. Okay. A joint presentation. Nice.
Mayor and council, this is consideration of the design of 24 pickleball courts at Steed Park and options for construction of temporary pickleball courts. A quick summary, this was agendized at the April 4th city council meeting with the thought that there might be potential future private funding to cover some of the construction costs. We previously, council previously approved design of 16 courts with the construction of eight courts. Staff explored options to install eight temporary courts until the design of the larger facility can be completed. And the temporary courts would replace existing courts at San G Park. A little background, our current scope of work with our architect includes the design of multiple features in the park, including 16 pickleball courts, a court plaza area, shade structures, prefab restroom building, new parking lot, and a switchback sidewalk to and from the parking lot. An extension of the existing parking lot and new landscaping, lighting, and fencing. Staff looked at also cost for temporary pickleball courts at Steed Park due to the timeline associated with building a new pickleball court facility. We thought the council may consider approving the construction of temporary courts at Steed Park. And although considered temporary, the courts will be high quality concrete courts with nets and fencing that are constructed in a manner that could be used for an extended period of time. The two areas that we looked at, it's steep arc for the temporary courts are near the, just north of the existing skate park. It's a flat area. The red box shows about where the courts could go. And this is a rendering of the area that the architect is designing. This is just a rendering of where the courts could also be built, constructed. Counsel options, we could amend the contract to design 24 courts at Steed Park with an $8,000 increase. We could continue with the current design of 16 courts at Steed Park. We could invite bids for eight temporary courts or a different amount at Steed Park just north of the skate park. We could invite bids for eight temporary courts or a different amount at Steed Park in the originally planned location. We could decide not to invite bids and wait for the final design from RGM before proceeding or continue the item with direction to provide additional information. The fiscal impact, as I mentioned earlier, increasing the design to 16, from 16 to 24 would just be an increase of $8,000. And it would increase the design time, which we have about four months left. It would add about a month to it. The cost estimate for eight temporary courts installed just north of the skate park is on the range of 100, 150,000 per court. So, the entire project would be around 800,000 to 1.2 million. This is just a rough estimate. We would actually need to get an estimate or put out a bid to see what the cost would be. A similar cost is expected in the current planned location, but there would be added grading costs probably on an order of a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's the end of my presentation and we're happy to answer questions.
Okay. Before we go to public comments, and I'm sure there's some, do we have any questions for staff?
I think if we, if we have questions first, that way the audience will have an opportunity to hear staff's response before they comment.
Yeah, yeah. Does anyone have any questions of Kyle?
Yeah.
Go ahead, councilmember Cabral.
I have a couple of questions. I understand with, with this first option, expanding it, the $8,000 increased cost, we already have pickleball courts, temporary ones that could be bid out immediately or we have a potential contract, we've gotten bids already. Is that right?
No, we, we would need to either prepare a bid package and go out to bids. We'd have to do that either way. There, there might be a possibility to look on the state contract and find a contractor that's already been vetted for this type of work.
Is there such a thing?
Yes, sir.
You, you don't have council direction yet to do it?
Exactly, yes, sir.
But if council gave that direction, you could go to the state bid site and take that because they've already been vetted by the state as a low cost producer of, of these pickleball courts?
Yes, sir. We'd have to give them our scope of work to find out the, the final price, but we can do that.
And what, how long would that take?
The state bid process expedites it. So, Kyle and I have worked diligently with a couple of companies that we know are part of those kind of processes. So, it's looking like we could probably land something within the next couple of weeks, assuming that we get the green light from council. And that would just be to initiate a proposal and contract. Construction of those temporary courts is estimated at four to five months.
And is, is it longer to do the construction at, at the place where all the eventual courts will be because of the additional grading?
Likely so, only because there is a significant amount of other equipment that's already out there. And then we're going to have to do a little bit more work to include a pathway back to the future permanent site, if that's the goal, because that parking lot is intended to be expanded eventually.
Would the temporary courts, if they were built at the, at the, at the site where all the other courts would, would they have to be torn out and redone when, when the final project is? Or would the anticipation be that they be integrated into the new product?
So, what, if we were to build next to the skate park, those eight temporary courts, components of that temporary build could be transferred over. So, your fencing, your benches, your nets, kind of that, the hardware, if you will, on top of the concrete. The concrete slab would stay in place. There, there could be potential though, as, as that concrete is basically an empty slab potentially in the future, you can look to add in some additional skate elements that would kind of complement the existing master plan that was just adopted as an interim before the future build out of the skate park as well. So, there could be a multi-use in the future.
If I was trying to get this done quickly, of these temporary courts, where would I put it?
Next to the skate park is the quickest spot.
Okay.
Good question.
If we don't go with this temporary thing, how, how long before we would have the other courts in the permanent area?
If we leave the scope of work at 16 courts, we'll be through with design in about four months. If we increase it to 24 courts, it'll take about five months. It'll take us at that point, two to three months to bid the work and then I'm guessing about six months to build the courts.
So, a little over a year, a little over a year, no matter what, for the, the larger project?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of staff before we hear public comments here? Okay, yeah. How many comments do we have?
We have, let's see, just five.
Okay.
Marty Weinberg, followed by Linda Williams, followed by Matt Young.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm Marty Weinberg, USA Pickleball Ambassador for the city of San Clemente. First of all, pickleball is in the house tonight. Thank you for your support. I've been coming to these meetings for five and a half years now and I'm always preaching the same talking points. So, I think you're probably tired of hearing the same information, so I'm going to go into a different direction. So, I'm hoping others will come up here and discuss how important pickleball is in the community, the four major tournaments at Lifetime Fitness this year, and also how important it is to build the courts at Steed Memorial Park. So, I'm going to discuss the history and the timeline on how pickleball has evolved at the city courts in San Clemente. It hasn't, that's my point. No, just joking. So, let's do this. 2016, December, the first pickleball classes, there was only four of us. We knew nothing about pickleball and the only one that knew anything was Rodell Barber. He was instructor. We were able to play one hour on Wednesday during class. We used a portable net and we had to chalk the lines at the Boys and Girls Club. If we wanted to play pickleball, we had to travel out of town. So, we circulated petitions, we approached Samantha and city council, and we discussed how important it is to have pickleball in the community. So, fast forward to October 2018, ribbon cutting ceremony at San Luis Rey Park, tennis court conversion, four temporary courts. We were only allowed to play three days a week. Two months later, San Gregorio Park came online. Again, tennis court conversion, four temporary pickleball courts, and we were only allowed to play three days a week there as well. Several months after that, we heard that they were going to close San Luis Rey Pickleball because of noise complaints. The courts were situated only 30 feet from the residence. So, it was back to Samantha, back to council, and this time we were promoting permanent courts. Fast forward to October 2019, grand opening at San Gregorio Park, four permanent courts, four temporary courts. That was three and a half years ago. We had about 100 people playing pickleball three and a half years ago. Fast forward to today, we have over 1,000 people playing pickleball in San Clemente. So, my point, my point is.
Please, no comments during someone else's comment.
My point is the eight city courts haven't kept up with the demand of the population that play pickleball. So, it's in your hands tonight. And so, I'm asking the four of you, Chris, Mark, Steve, and Victor, please vote yes to approve the project at Steed Memorial Park.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know it's not our protocol, but may I ask the speaker, since he is the pickleball ambassador, a quick question?
Okay.
Question, is the sound of pickleball has been an issue in our town and in many other towns across the country. Is there any technology, to your knowledge, to soften the impact of the noise, to keep the vibrancy of the game, but cut down the noise? Is there any, any technology being investigated along that line?
Yeah, there's, there's pickleball mitigation companies, but they're, they're trying different fabrics and, and just using blankets and noise barriers.
With the paddles themselves and the ball apparatus.
Um.
Just curious.
I'm not sure. You know, the standard is paddle and they're, they're using.
Just curious.
The plastic ball.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Linda.
Linda Williams, followed by Matt Young, followed by Buzz Buster.
There's a lot of people who like to play pickleball and it's, it's, I like the sport because you can, you can be eight year old, eight years old, you can be 80 years old and you can still play on the same court. During COVID, I taught 10 of my neighbors to play using, you know, in, in the cul-de-sac. We chalked up, don't tell the city, but we, we painted lines in our cul-de-sac and we played. And another cul-de-sac had, had, wasn't great. Our balls went down in the gutters, so we had to put blankets on them. I mean, we had to really work hard so that we could play. We just like to play. And, you know, we, we've done fundraisers where we've sold T-shirts and stuff. We're willing to help fundraise. We're willing to do whatever it takes to keep pickleball in San Clemente. And there are, most of us are San Clemente residents. Yes, there are people that do come out from outside of the city because we're such a great people to play with. But most of us are residents here in San Clemente and we want to play.
Matt Young, followed by Buzz Buster, followed by Amanda Q.
Good evening. My name is Matt Young. I'm a San Clemente resident. I'm the senior vice president of global operations for Glaukos Corporation. I've been with Glaukos since 2016. We're an eye care company dedicated to designing, developing, and manufacturing novel eye care treatments, including implantable medical devices and extended release pharmaceuticals. Glaukos, we believe, is the largest private employer in San Clemente. We have over 200 people at our site at 229236 Avenida Fabricante. And by this time next year, we anticipate over 300 people at our site. Our building at Avenida Fabricante is directly adjacent to the proposed, proposed Steed expansion that we're talking about tonight. Many of our employees live locally. We've been a good community partner. We support a local initiative such as Pure Pride. So, I'm here tonight just to express our potential interest in helping to support the park expansion as well as expressing our interest in securing some design features that would be mutually beneficial for Glaukos as well as the community. Over really the last six and a half years, we've met with various representatives of the city council to try to move forward some design features and haven't been very successful. And my petition here tonight is to be able to get into the design proposal as we consider sponsorship. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Buzz Buster, followed by Amanda Q, followed by, I believe it's.
First paddles. Mayor Duncan, councilman, legal counsel, and Parks and Recreation. My name is Buzz Buster and I have been a member of the American Arbitration Association as a judge for about 35 years with my offices here in San Clemente. So, I have said this before, but I'll say it again. The, we have and have had no pickleball courts in San Clemente when we first started off with this adventure. But I think that it's come time, when you look at all the other communities, I think it's time that we now take stock of that and let's get on with it to build courts. I won't take too much more time, but I will say that I have a dream. And at my age, the dream is that I would really like for my friends and myself, before I pass on to the great beyond, I would like to play pickleball at Steed Park. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Buzz Buster is one of the all time great names.
Hard act to follow. So, I'm concerned that certain plans or projects are being pushed through without regard to policy and procedure. The city council made an exception to expedite the plans of building eight pickleball courts to remove the existing. the plans of building a pickleball courts to remove the existing courts at San Gregorio Park because of complaints by residents. This was to ensure that the noise complaints from pickleball courts were addressed quickly. As a result, certain procedures have not been followed. The plans for the master plan for Steed Park have changed, and when there is a change in the master plan or the general plan amendment, those plans have to go to the Planning Commission. How is it the procedures were not followed? There are new plans for an indoor/outdoor building, and that structure has not gone through the Planning Commission, let alone there has been no discussion even for the indoor/outdoor building by the Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Committee or other plans. When I compare this to other plans such as Memorial Care, they had to change its plans to do a parking study to accommodate those concerns by the Planning Commission for parking. Yet there was no opinion by the Planning Commission about the master plan for Steed Park. Why is that? The Planning Commission has not applied on doing a parking study at Steed Park or the Lotneer Casa because these plans were not done procedurally. So why was there no subcommittee for pickleball courts as the City Council voted to have a subcommittee for the amphitheater? So I'm really concerned. You know, I'm glad that I've heard some comments that there is going to be private funding, but if we are going to view this as being fair to everybody as far as people wanting an amphitheater, then that should be the same thing for people wanting pickleball courts. Let's see, the steps were done, okay, at the last City Council meeting, I mentioned that Director Wiley did not make any announcements that sequo had come out. She made no announcements at any of the City Council meetings, at Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Committee meetings, and did not inform City Council members individually. And especially, she did not place an announcement in the San Clemente Times. There was no articles informing people to submit their public comments during the scoping comment, period. The steps that were done was at a bare minimum, according to Mayor Duncan just recently. Ultra Systems, the company who prepared the initial study, mitigated negative declaration, posted it on the city's webpage. But according to Mayor Duncan, former City Council member James and former Councilwoman Ferguson, all have stated that it's hard to find anything on the city's webpage. So how are members of the public expected to find this information when City Council members cannot do the same? So I think this is a flawed process from the very beginning, and I think it needs to go through the Planning Commission. And this is an error. This is a flawed process, and this needs to go to the Planning Commission. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Hey, hey.
Next speaker, I believe, is Marvin Dennis. Close enough. Tim Brown, followed by a concerned resident.
Team Council, Mr. Mayor, it's Marvin Dennis, San Clemente resident for 40-plus years. I am one of those people who play pickleball, and I thought it was the stupidest game until I played. Now this is a certain kind of addiction. A lot of cities throughout the country have taken up and embraced the pickleball community. There are tournaments being played, Newport Beach, Carlsbad, San Diego, Lifetime here in San Clemente, and this has now become an ESPN televised event oftentimes. So opportunities for people to play have grown, opportunities for people to actually take advantage of that growth. You might find that a 24-court facility would give you an opportunity to have tournaments and generate revenue that would then go back into that recreational activity. I'm a big fan of pickleball now. I think there are more than a few people here who are also San Clemente residents who would love to see it. Mr. Knoblauch, to address your concern, I had the same kind of thought about what could be done to mitigate the noise, because I know that's a problem, and that's a problem everywhere. There are certain regulations that have to be complied with to make a pickleball paddle legal, but I believe because the growth is going so dramatically, that might be something that could be revisited with the Pickleball Association. It might be something like putting on the same kind of cover that you have on a table tennis paddle to soften that sound. Anyway, thank you for listening and hope we can get this done.
All right. Thank you.
Tim Brown, followed by a concerned resident.
Mayor, members of council. So this is a, I think this is a great project, candidly, and obviously has a lot of support. I think the perspective on this that I would follow would be similar to perhaps what we did with the skate park a few years ago when we added the lights to it. Considered a phased approach. This would be phase one of the future expansion of the pickleball courts that you have there. You obviously have a tremendous groundswell of support. I've been to 100 City Council meetings over the last few years. Every city in the Western United States is grappling with exactly the same issue with pickleball demand, but very little supply. And so this is nothing new, and it's obviously been something that's very controversial here. If I may offer something to think about on this one is, is that when we ended up doing the, to get the lights for the skate park built, we ended up proposing, when the skate park coalition came to me, proposed, hey, listen, we put up a certain amount of funds, but for, you believe in it so much, why don't you put some private funds up? City will, you know, you do. Well, I think it was 250, 300,000, and they did 75,000 private donations, ended up getting the street, the lights built for the skate park right next to it, actually, and ended up being extremely successful, extending the hours of play. I would say that on the phased approach here, if you're going to build those courts there, there's an opportunity to raise money for the courts themselves, or at least for lighting for the courts, would extend play and offer for usage, you know, if you're going to spend 1.2 million and you're already there and you already have lights right next to it, it would make a lot of sense to tie in and maybe put lighting there that would allow for expanded use into the evening hours and to be able to get a more intense use. Call that phase one. Phase two would be the expansion of the courts up there, the additional courts to be part of it. But I think that San Clemente is on the cutting edge of pickleball success. We have become in the epicenter for it, especially here in Orange County. And I think it's an opportunity for, not only for an investment here, but a return. The popularity, the tournaments are incredibly profitable for the organizations that are putting them on. I think the city has an opportunity to be able to offset some of the expenses being generated here. One of the very few sports that has not only a tremendous amount of support, but also a lot of money that tends to be associated with it. And so I think in a phased approach, especially one where you're relying on this community to also put up and not simply ask, but also to put up their own funds to help get it built, I think there's an excellent opportunity here to be able to get this done. But I do support the project as currently defined.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a couple of questions?
Tim, I don't want to get into the practice of that. We shouldn't get in the practice of asking questions of the commenters. Go ahead.
I have a dream too. It's for this council to give me back the peaceful enjoyment of my home. Pickleball took that away from me in October 2018. It's illegal. It's against the state codes. It violated many of our city codes, including no sequo to study noise, traffic, parking. So yeah, my dream is, let me have my home and my rights back. It's the law. Thank you.
There are no additional comments.
Okay. Any discussion here? Or any more questions for staff?
Question. The 24 courts will be plumbed for electric lighting, is that correct? It'll be set up, that's included in your design plan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any reach, reaching out to look for sponsorships in this to help with some of the costs?
Yeah, that's absolutely part of our mission and our goal as we develop the pickleball facility, certainly working with the Friends of San Clemente to do fundraising. And I think that as one of our speakers mentioned, that that was a big initiative for the skate park lighting, where there was a commitment by a residential group of, it was a nonprofit. I think the Friends with working with the pickleball community can certainly source that.
Well, I think if you're talking about a larger sponsorship for the project, we need to have the project, like, approved first, right? So they're waiting to see what we're going to do, right? But the understanding is that there might be sponsors for a tournament level project, which would be the 24 courts, right? I think that's what we've heard. Yeah. Now, Councilmember Quall, you had questions that you, maybe you can direct them to staff.
They've been, I'll ask them to staff, how much fundraising has been done to date so far from private, or if any?
Yeah, good question. So there hasn't been any fundraising done, except we did, we did process a special event permit, I believe in 2021, for pickleball at San Gregorio. It was a pickleball tournament put on by a local group, and they raised $10,000 specific for the future of San Clemente pickleball.
Okay. And how is it that you see this being a revenue source? Because I know, we've talked about it being a revenue source, but I know, like, we charge our kids to play soccer. We charge them to play baseball. We charge them to play football. Is that the type of revenue source that we're talking about? Or what are we talking about?
Yeah, really good question. Again, I think there's a lot of different ways we could look at it, and staff's prepared to bring back kind of a proposal on what operations would look like. But certainly, you could charge, it could be a pay-to-play. There's a lot of options. If you look at other cities who have tennis facilities or pickleball facilities, not everything's free. There's a membership that may be, similar to what we have the pool. You can get a three-month membership. You can get an annual pass. You can play, you can do a drop-in. Our pools are not free. I think a similar model could work there. And then also, there's lessons, there's tournaments, there's facility rentals. All of that can generate revenue.
Discussion going on already with the pickleball groups, organization, or is this just at a staff level right now?
It's just at a staff level for the time being. I think as soon as we get deeper into the construction, once we get a design approved, now we're looking at construction. Staff would be prepared to bring back operational options for the council to consider.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion or anything? Okay. We have a few different options. Maybe we should put those up, or is someone ready to do a motion right now?
I'll make, I know what I...
You want to see if you can navigate it?
I'll see if I can navigate it. What I'm trying to do, I'd like to authorize the execution of the amendment to include the 24 courts with additional $8,000 increase as is outlined in the first one. What I'm trying to accomplish, though, is, I'm trying to get this done as quickly as possible. So I'd like to see that, you know, we utilize the state bid, or the state-approved bid, so that we can move expeditiously, since it's already, those are all normally approved already. And we need to get this started as soon as possible so we could move out of the other facility. And those are the two concerns. And I think it would also mean that it would be the location nearest the parking lot that exists right now. Is that right?
The skate park area, yeah.
Yeah, the skate park, yeah.
You're moving for the 24 courts and then the temporary courts on an expedited basis next to the skate park.
That's correct.
That make sense? Okay. Anything else? Any other direction that you're looking for on this? Okay. Anybody else?
I'll second it.
Okay. Second is, okay, motion is Cabral, second is...
Enmire.
Yes.
I was just going to ask that you put a date on that for us and that we bring something back to your next meeting. I think we can do that. We can bring back some information about the state bid, just so we can have that pressure cooker to keep this thing expedited moving on.
I'd like that.
Friendly amendment from the city manager?
Yeah, friendly amendment, yeah. And I will, I will be quite honest. I mean, we've got to move out of the other park as quickly as possible. I think the concerns that have been raised by residents here are real. And I'd like to see us, you know, it's a win-win. You know, we move it as quickly as possible. We save her from hearing this pickleball. And I don't know what else we can do, but we have to do it expeditiously.
Yeah, all that makes sense. This isn't part of the motion, but I will ask staff, would you engage with Mr. Young over there? Glaukos, really important company for us, a lot of workers, they're growing fast. Would love to have them engaged as much as possible in what the final, you know, view, or I guess, representation of the park looks like, and, you know, have their concerns addressed. So, but as far as the motion, we have a, the motion is Cabral, second is Enmire, and, okay, Councilmember Ray.
I...
Okay. Councilmember Quall.
I wholeheartedly support the motion.
Okay. I'm an "I" as well. That's unanimous.
Okay, moving on to item, actually, I'll wait a minute till the room...
Want to take a quick break?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, just to let the room clear.
Consideration of procedures to appoint a council member to fill the unexpired term of former council member Jean James. And before you-
We're starting up again, please. Everyone take your seats. Please, everyone, take your seats. We're starting again. You want to repeat that, Laura?
Sure. Next item on the agenda is consideration of procedures to appoint a council member to fill the unexpired term of council member Jean James. And with that, I will proceed with my presentation. Our goals tonight are to determine a process to nominate the candidates, select those candidates, schedule a special meeting, and then determine the process for interviewing candidates. So before you, you have a list of applicants. We received 23 applications to fill the vacancy. With that, we can consider nominations, the pro, excuse me, the process for nominating candidates to be interviewed. We are suggesting that council select one of the following recommendations. We had a recommendation from a council member that each council member select two candidates to be interviewed. So go through the list of 23, each council member select two. Another consideration would be for council to use the nomination ranking sheet, which is in each of your binders. And you'd be provided five points to rank up to five candidates. And the number, the candidates with the highest numbers would move onto the interview process. Council may vote on each candidate. And a third option would be for council to vote on each candidate. And anyone that receives two or more votes would be moved on to the interview process. Or council could, of course, choose to select its own procedure. So if we want to start with that, determining the procedure for nominations.
Any thoughts on the procedure for narrowing down the applicants?
Well, if I could start, I think we've got some excellent applications. We've got 23 applications. And many of these people, I think we all know, some of them we don't know, some of them I don't know at all. I think it would be fair to everyone that took the time to apply to at least hear from them and see them. So, and I'm open, I don't have any, my opinions aren't cemented on this, but I think what would be nice is if we had a special meeting where we invited all of the candidates to give a very brief presentation, a couple of minutes maybe, max, and maybe one or two questions at that. And then after we've visibly seen and heard from each of the candidates, do a straw poll because it's such a large list, maybe do a small, a straw poll of, let's say, the top two or three people that we would like to consider being appointed. And take that list, eliminate a number of the candidates, and then maybe do a straw poll on nominations, perhaps for those to kind of see who, see if we can build a consensus.
Is there an interview portion to that process? Or are you thinking their presentation kind of-
Well, with 23, if we gave everyone a couple of minutes, we're 45 minutes to an hour, with a question or two, I think a follow-up question or two would probably be appropriate.
Okay, so, but that's not a standard interview. Are you, well, I guess my question was, once you narrow down the scope to the two or three, would there be interviews of those candidates?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. A more lengthy interview with more formalized questions and then a voting protocol.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I'm just wondering on, I'm just wondering on what we think the timing might be on that. I like the idea, I'm open to it. This is something that we need to do over two special meetings. Do you think we could get it done in one special meeting?
Possibly we could get it done in one meeting if we had enough time allocated for it. I don't have a strong feeling on that, but I think what kind of what makes sense. We want to make sure we make a good decision, it's good for the community, and one that's logical and makes sense. And if we don't, we can always go to a special election, but I think we need to give it enough time to make sure we've properly interviewed and vetted and really seen the candidates. Because there are a number of them I don't know. I would just like to get to know them and see them and-
Yeah. My reaction to that is, first of all, I appreciate all the candidates and what they've, what they're doing and the work they're, they've done to apply. There are some extraordinary people that I didn't even know existed. Maybe they'll run for office in the future. But the problem is, what we're trying to do is, you know, essentially a one-year campaign or a six-month campaign in one meeting. And I don't know that we can do that really, to really learn about those people. So for me, I think I have to, I mean, the people that, I think I have a good idea of the individuals that I might support. I went and I read everything that everybody wrote up, and I think that was their opportunity to make their best case as why they should be on the city council. So I, I don't know that in a short interview that we would get anything much more than what we got in their applications, that they want to do great things for the city. And that doesn't tell me anything, really, except they want to do great things for the city. So if we were going to do this 24 interviews, I would say we'd have to, you know, give them at least an hour to thoroughly vet them if we're going to vet them. But I think that's too much. I think I, I think the option, the first option that was mentioned, you know, where I don't, and I will say this also, I don't like the point system because that gives us, you know, it's more of gamesmanship than, you know, people picking out the candidates that they think deserve an interview. And it would be extraordinarily hard to pick out one or two or three candidates, or at least two candidates, it was suggested, you know, because it's like picking out your favorite child. How do you do that? How do you do that, you know? Because there's so many qualified people, people that deserve, that could fit on this city council. But it's a process that we have to narrow down. We may never, I don't think we will ever get to really knowing these individuals in a short interview. So unless we're going to give them a long interview, I like the proposal of just, you know, each of us picking our two favorite or people that we think that might get the votes on this city council and become a working participant of the city council. And that will give us eight people to thoroughly vet and spend time with. So that's my thinking on it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
What if we do something like this where each of us have two people that we like put forth, we put forth a name if that person gets a second, then that counts as your one candidate. If it doesn't, then you could pick someone else that gets a second until there's eight, we narrow it down to eight people.
Well, we may not make it to the end of the-
I think what, maybe what council member Enmire's point is, is if you don't have multiple council members approving of a candidate, then there's no possibility, I mean, like, you know what I mean? Like, so the problem with the just the two maybe is that you end up with, there's only one council member chiming in on that person, basically. And so the point system allows for some multiple input into a person. They have to get, you know, some amount of support from more than just one council member.
Not necessarily, though, in this point system. Someone could give, someone could give, someone could give five points to one candidate.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. I, I don't think we should allow that. I was thinking the point system would be you have to pick, you know, five candidates. Everybody picks five.
Everyone takes five.
Everybody picks five, and then we reassess after we look at who gets the higher scores.
That's kind of what I was thinking when I said two or three, but five is even better.
Yeah.
Narrows it down, I think.
But, and then, okay, but this would mean that everybody doesn't get to have their day in court, basically, and everybody doesn't get to come before us.
It would. I quite frankly would like to hear from the people that I don't know. There were five or six on there that I just didn't know. I read their materials as well. But, you know, it just, it helps you see someone when you can sit across the table, look them in the eye, and listen to them talk. It's difficult to get to know someone just from paper. So maybe-
It's also get to, difficult to get to know someone from one interview.
Well, that's very true, but it's more, it's better.
Not even one interview, one minute statement.
Yeah, well, at least it's something.
Yeah.
So I would, you know, we could do that at a meeting where we hear everyone, make our multiple choice or selections the top, you know, two, three, four, or five, and weed everyone else out, and then look at those people, and maybe even weed them down again, or do an extensive interview of the four or five, you know.
At a, at that same meeting?
At that same meeting. Or we could schedule again, depending on the timing, right?
So if we, if we did some, some kind of arrangement where every one of the 24, four or three, 23 applicants got a minute, say, that, how long are we talking just for that? Do you think, city manager?
Forty-six, 23 or 46 if you give them one minute or two minutes.
Well, but it's not, it's not right after each other. There's going to be breaks until we get people up there, so.
Forty minutes, thirty, forty minutes.
Okay, so, I'd say, I'd just say that.
I don't know if one minute is enough to-
That's pretty quick. Couple of minutes anyway.
Yeah.
Say a lot in two minutes. We could say a lot in three minutes.
Yeah.
As we know.
Yeah, I mean, we have such a number of applicants, it just seems like, you know, it would be nice if we could, we could trim it down now to people that are in serious consideration.
I mean, I saw some people that I think would make extraordinary city council members, but they may be new to town, they're not regular at the city council meeting. I don't know them, and I don't know that I'll learn that in one minute or even in an hour. So it may take a little bit more than that for them to get a seat on this city council.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind spreading that, I mean, we have 60 days, correct? Before we have, yeah, so-
Correct.
We have a little bit of time.
Not from today.
Not from today, from-
From Saturday or-
So we have, what, 45 days? More or less?
June 28th is the-
June 28th. We have a little bit of time. We don't have to make this decision next week at one special council meeting. We could spread it out.
Sorry.
Saying, we have a little bit of time on this, we could spread it out to learn a little bit more about the candidates in, but that would require us to have more than one special council meeting over the next under 45 days.
Which is not, not out of the question. Well, I'd like to see where we are on this, though. Like, do most of us want to at least give every applicant the chance, every candidate a chance to present their case in person? Or do we not think that that's really a worthwhile exercise?
I personally think it's a worthwhile effort. I think it's fair to them, fair to the community, and gives us a better understanding of the candidates.
Yeah, I'll say this, and I would like to, I would love for us to trim it down, but when we do councils and commissions, everybody gets to come in and present their case. It seems like this is at least more important than that. So, and sometimes we have a lot of applicants for those. So, you fine with that? I mean, I know that you-
I would be fine with it, but I, but it's got to be a full, you know, at least an hour for each of them, because I don't think I could learn anything more, less than that.
Hour for each candidate?
Yeah. I would like to, if I'm going to take the time, I want to take the time to learn.
That's a long meeting. It'd be a full 24 hours.
It'd be a three-day meeting.
Public comments, is it, we will take those after our conversation or?
Yeah, let's see, we've already gotten into our conversation here. Yeah, let's take public comments as soon as we, I didn't know we had any.
Are we ready for public comments? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
First speaker is Bridgette Callinan, followed by Julie Patton, followed by Amanda Q.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak. I'm here tonight because Donna Vedrine has endured the cost and the effort to run for council twice, winning the most votes of those who didn't win a seat. I'm here tonight to request that the democratic process be respected by choosing Donna Vedrine as Jean James' replacement. Because she's qualified, she's earned it, and our city needs a woman on the council to represent our female population. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Julie Patton.
Hi, Pastor Julie Patton, Christ Lutheran in San Clemente. Donna Vedrine attends, but it's not her church necessarily. I am here to say that all those candidates, the 23 people, deserve at least three minutes to show who they are and for you to know who they are. I also support Donna in this because she was the next highest vote getter. You have no females on this board. You need to have someone to balance out the male masculinity up there and share the women's point of view. Thank you.
Amanda Q, followed by Louise, followed by Tim- Amanda Q., followed by Louise, followed by Tim Brown.
Uh, when, uh, late former Steve Schwartz passed away, unfortunately, it was a votes, uh, vote split on that, uh, split vote, sorry. And, um, so it went to a special election. At that time, the next, uh, I think the next highest, uh, basically won the, the special election candidate. However, uh, that was a, a vote regarding the, the people that voted. I mean, it was a big, bigger, um, basically, uh, election process, uh, where you have, uh, camp, you know, a campaign, you have, um, endorsements from certain parties, so, uh, that's something that's totally different at this time. Um, and when, uh, the, when former Mayor Dan Bain left after, I think, one and a half years of serving as mayor or city councilmember, um, you know, he moved, um, there was an opportunity, he took it, he moved, I think it was to Missouri. And, um, and then there was a four, uh, met city councilmember, and I think that went to special elections as well. So I, I think, um, when I'm hearing people say that the next runner-up should get it, uh, that's necessarily not, um, it doesn't take in consideration the cumulative votes, the voting system for our population or those who voted. Um, I, you know, when I looked at this position, um, for the appointment, um, I'm automatically thought we need a representative, a city councilmember, who can just come in and know the procedures of running a city council meeting. As far as Rosenberg's rule of order, um, there is at least four city, uh, four representatives here, um, two that are former planning commissioners or current planning commissioner, and one that's in the Public Safety Committee and as well as the Human Affairs Committee. So I, I appreciate all the candidates that came in and applied, or that applied, but I, I think that, um, you know, making a decision right now as far as selecting the first five, or your favorite five, or the most fitted for the position right now, I think is a little bit premature. Um, I appreciate that, um, you give the opportunity to those, those appointees or those applicants to come in and, um, give their moment to speak, to, um, give that, just like as commission committees. But I do not support the ranking system because as Vic, as Councilmember Victor Carbal had mentioned, that this ranking system, um, you can give, one councilmember can give someone five, uh, five points immediately, and that's a concern. So, uh, thank you for your time.
Louise, followed by Tim Brown, followed by Concerned Resident.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. I'm Louise Herbert, a nearly 40-year resident of this city who's watched the city council go through many evolutions. I'm thrilled to see that there is a large spectrum of people who are wanting to be appointed or considered for the appointment. I don't want to look backward at previous elections and say, well, the next person who received votes should automatically be given the position. In previous elections, in our, even our local dumb congressional district, if we'd have gone with that, we would have had Applegate. So, right now, we have more people to consider than we did in the previous election, so I would like to see these people vetted. I'd like to make a suggestion that each one of the people who is on the application do a five-minute video with the three same questions that the board comes up with. You submit those questions to the applicants. They have five minutes to answer them in a video that they send to you, and you review those videos, and you make your decisions individually, and then come together for discussion and get the field narrowed down. I don't believe in doing it in a public setting. It would be different if we were doing a full election and doing public forums for debate, or whether they're called forums or debate, but I think this might help you to narrow down, give you more of an opportunity to see the people you're not familiar with in more than just a minute or two, but if you're giving them all the same questions, you could see how they would react to those. Just my suggestion.
Tim Brown, followed by Concerned Resident, followed by Susan Ambrose.
Mr. Council, um, it's been interesting to, to hear the deliberations on this question because it's a problem actually we never faced that I can remember during my tenure on council in eight years, and it's been happening twice in the last four years, I believe it is. Let me offer this solution here. I think you have a number of the interested candidates that are here tonight. Candidly, those that aren't here tonight probably aren't that interested. So you have the opportunity, I'll take two minutes starting right now, to say why it is that I'm interested and be seated here, invite my fellow candidates to do the same, and we could simply cut to the chase tonight. It's budget season, you're going to have a long summer, Casper Monica sliding down the hill, there's plenty to do, and so it's probably best to get after it. Um, but I do believe that, you know, the deliberation should be thoughtful and should be contemplative, um, but candidly, it's also, there is no perfect process. There is no template. There is no magic bullet that's going to make this all better. So why did I put my name in? Pretty simple. I feel like, um, at this point, especially with our, our city and with this election coming up here, um, I just feel like I could be an experienced candidate. Um, I, candidly, I believe in chemistry is a big part of any team, um, and, uh, bringing somebody in who has not only, I guess, sat in there for eight years, but also has seen how chemistry can cause a council to go the wrong way, and how, uh, being a certain personality or a certain type can, uh, actually take the city backwards instead of forwards. Um, I have zero interest in running a campaign in two years. I don't want to run an election. I'm, I'm more than happy to, uh, do my time to help the council where it's needed and then to go away as quietly as possible. Not quietly, you know, with, uh, with some fanfare, maybe, but, um, a parking pass, maybe this time. But, um, I'm happy to help out where it's necessary. Uh, that's why I put my name in the hat. There's a lot of good candidates, and so ultimately, uh, this council has a, a awesome problem from them, which is to pick from this incredibly qualified candidate pool. Um, but I'd just like to offer maybe that solution tonight and see if maybe that's one way for you to start, uh, to make some decisions. 24 seconds left. Pretty good.
Thank you.
Concerned Resident, followed by Susan Ambrose.
That has to be one of the most presumptuous statements I've ever heard, that he has the charisma for this council, but whatever. Here's what I suggest, just to think about it. Each candidate had their opportunity to make their case when they submitted their paperwork. So how about you give each of them three minutes to, again, make their case? Maybe they've had things over, maybe they neglected to submit something. Give them a chance to, again, make their case. Then you all have two questions that you can ask them. Limit your questioning time, limit their response time. Narrow it down to five. Then conduct your full interview. Same day, or if you need more time, another special, um, meeting. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Susan Ambrose.
Good evening. I've been in those panels, I've been in those waiting lists, I've been classified with maybe 15 other people at one year or another. I've seen the planning commissioners who have, applied for planning sit as long as that as well, and even beaches, parks, and recreation. So you never know how many people might show up and turn up, and particularly with, uh, written applications. What I did find out in every single one of those opportunities that was given to me is I spelled out what I wanted to do in my answers of questions, and when I went to the interview along with all of the other people, um, I was, I was faced with four or five faces that asked me questions. They were the same question to every person who went up for those interviews, and if I said something that was provocative to somebody's further inquiry, they could ask a question, and that's how it went. So some people got maybe 10 minutes, some people got 15 minutes because they talked longer, because they, they made a point that somebody wanted to dig into further, but it was all very cordial. Nobody left in tears, and nobody left angry or stomping their feet. It was all very professional, it was all very well-handled, so I'm just passing on an experience from the many times that I've been in front of city councils and various ones at that. So thank you very much for the effort that you're giving to it, and the past two, um, women who, who contributed ideas, I like those ideas as well. You see how easy it is to have choices that you can make? Thank you very much.
Tony Rubellino.
Okay, so we've been through the whole council election process years and years, right? And so what we see are the same questions asked over and over. Nobody wants a toll road, everybody wants to support, you know, the, the catchphrase motto, everybody's budget-conscious, everybody wants to do something about the homeless, but what you need to be asking, what you don't know about the candidates. That's where the real truth comes out. For example, you might have, uh, you might discover that certain people in the room oversaw and way over-budget on the, uh, construction project over at North Beach, and then you might also find that certain people in the room also have viral videos of them exploding at council meetings with close to 300,000 views that have gone viral. You might also find that people who have applied for the process have produced and deleted Black Lives Matter tribute videos where they talked about their white privilege. You might find lots and lots of things. So what you should be asking is what you don't know. Everybody's going to be able to come up, you can produce whatever questions about how much they love San Clemente and all the wonderful things that they'd like to do for the city, which you got to find out is, scratch a little deeper in the surface. So good luck, Council.
Lynda Williams.
I just wanted to say, just listening to your discussion, um, I don't think you need, because you're not trying to go to the whole city, you don't need six months candidate, you know, a canis, tenancy, I don't think you need a whole hour either. I like the, I like what Ruth said about the one meeting, um, three minutes, so that give you an opportunity to see their face, hear them talk, how they do it. I think you need to do that all in one meeting, so you don't have people come and say, oh, well, last time he said this, and so I'm going to come over and I'm going to say that. You need to do all of that at one meeting, and then pick, I like the third option there, where then, because of what you said about at least having a second city councilperson weigh in, so that you have at least two people that maybe wants that candidate. So I like the third option there, from, from those three minutes, to pick the third option there, so that you can then, from those, those people, come back and interview them with a longer interview. That's what I'd like to see.
We have no additional speakers.
I don't want a female.
I think she still had time. Um, so, we're back, uh, talking about this. Um, did, do we have any more kind of clarity on where we want to go after the comments?
I, I like the idea that each, each candidate gets three to five minutes to speak. They, they can make their case, they, they're putting themselves out here to begin with to, to say they want to serve the city. I think it's respectful at least to them to, to give them that, that choice, and then from there after we hear them all, they, they have three minutes to make their case. We can then...
You like the third option there?
Yeah, a- after we hear them, winnow it down and say, all right, who, who do we want to see go on to a, a second interview process?
I, I, I can live with the, the five minutes. The only advice I'd...
Five minutes or three minutes?
F- f- three, three or five, whatever, you know, the consensus. The only, uh, advice I would give the candidates is that if you spend your five minutes talking about, I believe, you know, in parks, I believe, you know, everything, yeah, I want to do everything great for this city, and tell us nothing about the core issues that are before this city council, then it's going to be hard to get some of our votes. It's going to be hard to get my vote, because there's a lot of issues that we're confronted with, that if you don't tell us what you really think about the issues, and just say, I, I love the beaches, I love the parks, I, I, I love, uh, you know, the soccer, I love pickleball, you know? That doesn't tell me anything, and I've looked at all these resumes, and that was the problem, that everybody loves this city, and I understand that. We all do, but you got to distinguish yourself and let us know what those core issues and what you're going to, uh, do, uh, to promote those core issues.
Let me, let me ask a core question here then, on that. Do we, are we, are we confident that a three-minute presentation, I, I think three is plenty, it's already going to be quite, quite lengthy with 23 people, but that you're going to know enough about that, about the candidates, more than is in the packet, to give you more of an educated feel? Is that, I mean, it's a...
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Um, and then...
I think that, that second, once we winnow it down, the second one, we can maybe each of us ask a more pointed question, uh, to those...
After we've winnered it down?
After we've winnered it down...
The top, what, four or five candidates?
Yeah, top five candidates, whatever it is, yeah.
And we could do that in the same evening. If we had a, if we, if we scheduled an evening, we could, uh, interview the, the three minutes in an hour, uh...
And then deliberate?
Deliberate, and do some straw polls, get the top three, five, do some more interviews and, and, and vote. I, I, I think we could do that in, uh, at that, at that...
City Manager, any thoughts here on, on whether we could do all of that in one meeting? You're...
I'm adopted. My parents tell me that I'm Danish and French, but tonight I'm Switzerland.
All right.
We could, and if we can't, we can always go to a second meeting, Chris, I mean, you know.
Uh, all right, so let's, 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 let's play this out. Three minutes is going to be three times as long, so that's, uh, a couple hours.
An hour, that's enough, that's, uh, yeah.
Say it's an hour and a half to two hours.
Hour and a half, two hours to get through all the presentations.
Well, we go to two minutes. I mean, we, the, the issues that Victor mentioned...
I'm fine with two minutes.
Yeah, we, we, we know what they've said, we need to hear what, what...
Mayor, if you are talking logistics, one of the things that we've been trying to look at is possible days. Um, we do have the budget workshop on the 23rd, we could start quite early that day, um, maybe be ready to start this meeting early afternoon if you're... I'm, I'm glad to talk logistics, I don't want to talk politics, that's, you know, I got to stay out of that.
Budget workshop is already scheduled to start at four.
So, so if we, we could move that up a couple hours, maybe start the budget workshop about two, and...
We got a school teacher.
I'm open by 1:15 on that Tuesday.
So two o'clock, we could start that, perhaps, and then we would...
1:15?
1:15.
Well, I'm, one, well...
I, I could, I could be here by 1:15, if, but that is up to you.
Two, look, two o'clock gives us two hours to do the budget. Now you're at four. You can't really bring people in before four, because people work, they have jobs, they're, they, you know what I mean? Like, you can't start much before four in terms of the, the candidate interviews, so...
I got to be blessed more.
So then, uh, I mean, I think that still gives us plenty of time. I mean, you're starting at four, so...
Be done by six on that first round?
Yeah, be done by six, and then we could continue on. I mean, that's still plenty of time.
The next day?
No, I'm saying that, that same night. It would be done with all of the statements by six.
And go down to...
Well, I'd rather start earlier, because it's, it's, it's a late night otherwise.
You started at two, we'd have two hours before the budget meeting to do the initial interviews and pare it down, and either schedule the final decision process for after the budget meeting or for a separate meeting.
Well, I'm thinking we could do the budget meeting first, move the budget meeting up, because that way candidates have to work, they got jobs, whatever, they can make it by four o'clock.
Yeah.
We anticipate the budget workshop should take two hours or less.
Yeah, so...
So we can limit it to...
I mean, I think if we start at four, we got plenty of time to do all this.
Four for the budget meeting?
No, four for this, for, for the...
We have a budget meeting at four.
No, the budget meeting's at two.
Two. If we move the budget meeting up to two.
Budget meeting's at two, and then we start at four with this.
Yeah, absolutely.
We got plenty of time.
Sure.
We got plenty of time. I mean, look, we, we, we start our regular meeting at six, so we would be done with the whole thing by, by when we actually start a regular meeting. And then we would have enough time if we feel like deliberating, and then if we don't, we could schedule a special meeting to have the interviews.
I think we, we may be able to come to terms that evening, and if not, we can always reschedule for further discussion.
I don't have anything that, that day, so, yeah, I mean, that works for me. Like, we just start, we schedule a special meeting for the 23rd, right after the budget meeting. We don't put a timetable on it. We give everybody, you know, you want to do less than three minutes?
Yeah, two minutes is fine with me.
Two minutes is fine with me.
Any thoughts?
I mean, I, two minutes is a, is a very short time to get in, but...
I just feel like since we already, three minutes is already the standard, like, let's just, let's just do the standard.
Yeah.
So we'll stick with the three minutes, that's what people get to comment.
They don't have to use all the three minutes.
They don't have to use the whole three minutes.
Give them bonus points if they don't use three minutes.
Right. And then that, you know, that gives us an idea of, of the timeframe, and then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll deliberate after that, um, and then we'll, uh, see if we can make a decision on narrowing it down and whether we want to do those interviews right then, or... to do those interviews right then or, or another meeting. I mean, the difficulty of doing it right then, we'll have to decide on the, on the, on the process for the interviews right now.
I need to know the date on the next meeting because I'm traveling, so.
Well, the 23rd you're available.
The following day I'm available.
I'm available the following day as well.
We could do the following day too for the interviews if we just make it easy that way so then we're not.
For that Wednesday? I would not be available that Wednesday until six. I could do 6:00 PM that Wednesday.
That's fine. So 23rd, we do the budget workshop, two to four. We have a special meeting starting at four, 24th, we have a special meeting starting at six.
If we need it.
I'm sorry, at six on the 23rd?
Six on the 24th.
On the 24th, right.
The, in terms of the process, and maybe this is a question for you then, Laura. So we need to kind of figure out what the interviews are going to be like, probably now then.
Correct. So that's, that's my next slide. Process for interviewing candidates. One suggestion is to have a panel set up. Many of you participated in a, a council forum when, when you were running for council. So of course this could change a little bit based on your, your most recent discussion. But we propose having the candidates sit, and maybe this would be your final candidate, sit in a, in a forum type setting. Each council member would be able to give two questions to each candidate. You would go in rounds. That would give each of the candidates an opportunity to be the first and the last to answer questions. We, we would allow one minute each to, for them to answer their questions. Another option would be for you to interview candidates individually. I do want to let you know that it is a public meeting, so candidates would be in the room.
Hearing other candidates being interviewed.
Right.
Could we ask them to leave?
We certainly could ask them to leave.
Be voluntary, but.
Yes, yeah. We could set up a space in, in.
But, but, but they could still watch it.
Correct.
They could still watch that.
Well, what if they're in the, the, the room right behind us here?
I mean, we'd have to make sure they don't have cell phones on them during the interview. I, I don't.
I don't know. What's wrong with the forum? What's wrong with the forum?
Well, the, the forum, I, I, I'll tell you what's wrong with it, in my view at least, is that, you know, when you had a forum, and Steve and I just went in, went through this, is the first person answers a question and the second one says, I agree, but I do it better. The third one says, and I would do it better than those two. And so it doesn't, you know, you get no new information.
Yeah.
And if we're trying to learn something, we don't, I mean, I don't think you learn anything.
Yeah, my, my, my feeling is we, we each have an opportunity to ask a question or two, whatever question we want to ask, and we get one-minute responses.
But do you do it in a forum setting or individual?
Individual, individual.
Individual.
I like the individual idea.
I, I don't, there may be a candidate, I don't want to ask him any, I don't need to ask him any questions. And others, I, I want to probe a little bit.
But I'm, okay. I, I think we're re-sensing the forum thing doesn't quite work in this.
I don't think it works.
No, the same, you get the same question. You're going to get 23 of the same answers.
Well, at that point, we'd be narrowed down to five or six candidates. But either way, you're, I, I agree with this sentiment.
We could house them in the, the green room.
We could give them the option to house them in the green room.
Yeah. We'll put them in that little square back there.
Blow a bunch of dollar bills in there and.
Well, actually, but my original proposal was that with those five, we would all.
They're up against the.
We would all turn our chairs around, and if they got three of us to turn around, they'd get an interview.
Ah, there you go. Nice. We don't, we don't know who's answering the question.
Well, no, that's another option. We'd have buzzers. If they get three buzzers, they're out.
All right. So let's, uh, let's do the individual interviews. And we're going to aim for five, I guess, where we're not, we're going to not narrow ourselves down to.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't limit us to five, you know, if there's six or seven, but if.
It's at least five.
At least five, yeah.
But leave it open right now, you think, for the finalists?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So I'm hearing, and do we still want them to do the opening statement? Even though they just did an opening statement the day before or that, at that, even at that meeting?
We'll give them three minutes to stay their peace and to make their pitch. And that is their opening statement.
Right.
And.
In the second.
The second day.
In the interviews. Do we, do we do the opening?
No, I think we just go into questioning.
No, we go right into questions.
I agree.
Maybe questions on a closing statement, a 30-second closing statement if they want one.
Right. And if there's something that needs to be said, they can include that in their answer to any question and pivot to.
Yeah, I think we just do questions. I mean, let's just keep it, keep it basic. All right. So then we, we have 23 three-minute presentations. And then on the, uh, either later that day or the next day. Well, first of all, we have to figure out how to, how to narrow it down.
Yeah.
Let's, let's do the, what, what, we have the four o'clock budget meeting. Why don't we reconvene, we'll, we'll hear the candidate, we'll hear the candidate's statements at two, we'll get that.
No, 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 we're moving the budget to two.
Budget at two. We hear, we hear the comments at four. We identify, we pare it down at that time.
Okay.
And, and we make a decision. I mean, we, we might be able to vote that evening and get it done. But if not, we can reschedule.
Just tell them to hang out, okay.
And, and, and be prepared on Wednesday at six o'clock to, to make a decision if we can't do it that evening.
Well, we have to give notice of the meeting, though. How does that work?
Exactly. That's, that's exactly what I was going to say. We.
Oh, we can cancel it.
We can publish a 24, a special meeting.
Publish it and then cancel it if we need to. Okay. And then, okay, but we never, we haven't, we haven't decided, maybe it's the one thing we haven't. How do we, what method do we use to trim it from 23 to five or whatever?
I think, as has been said, we each identify the top four or five candidates. We could pick any number, the four or five candidates, we would be comfortable considering.
So we would take our sheet, every council member, and we would.
Identify five.
Put five. Then we would hand them into you. Laura, you would count up and say, okay, if this person got two or three or four or one or none. And then, once we saw who got multiple, I guess, selections, we could then, we would have to then make a motion basically to.
What?
Not a point, but to have them be finalists to be interviewed.
Yes. But I think we need the flexibility that if what's, when we do that, that review, if it's evident and obvious who has strong majority support, that we entertain a motion. I, I'm not opposed to that. I would, we can always go on and have more interviews to make sure they're thoroughly vetted.
I think we could certainly cut the process short if we wanted to.
I want that flexibility just, just in case, but I don't want to be locked into a, a, a protocol that requires us to go on and on and on.
Is that appropriate, city attorney, that we, we, we set out a basic process? But if we decide at any point we're ready to nominate and select a person, right? We could just do that.
We just need to have the notice in the agenda be sufficiently broad enough to, to keep that open. That's really the only.
Interviews if necessary or whatever, like something like that, like I guess.
Or we could table them, if, if it's on there, the agenda, then we could table that for the.
Yeah, you could, you could say.
For the Wednesday meeting.
Like we did for today, right? It includes picking the process and potentially interviewing and potentially nominating and appointing, right?
Yeah, keep it broad like that.
Potentially all of it.
Okay, but I do want to be clear for us so that we don't have to have this discussion again, you know? Okay, so it sounds like 23 people, three minutes each, at four o'clock on the 23rd. After that, we will get our sheets. We will all select five people, let's say. We will hand them back to, to, we'll report back to us about who has what numbers of votes. Someone will make a motion about who is the finalists to be interviewed or who should be appointed, and we, we go from there. If, if we appoint someone, we appoint someone. If we, if we decide on finalists, we can decide then and there to bring them back and have the interviews right then, or we can go to the next day and do the interviews then.
If that's the pleasure of the majority of the council.
That's the will of the council, yeah.
One question that I do.
Depends on the timing.
One question I do have that we might need to think about is the vetting of the candidates from a legal perspective. We've had candidates that have had legal situations in their background that, that were not properly vetted. I'm just wondering if the sheriff's department, what the appropriateness of having the sheriff's department do a, 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 a public records of vetting of the candidates, just to see what's in the public record. I'm just asking if that's appropriate, if it's, if it's something that we, we should do. I mean, I think I have someone that I've never heard of find out.
Captain Christian, do you have, you have any idea what you might be able to do on a list of? Yeah.
It's kind of a public records background check, yeah, it's kind of.
I, I don't know.
I don't know if there are any DUIs or any restraining orders or things like that, you know? I mean, we could individually Google and rely on the community to do that. I'm just wondering if that's something.
I don't know. Is this a process that anyone's familiar with? That there's a background check on applicants for commissions, city council or anything?
So there.
Yeah, to run for council, is there?
Minimum qualifications, and I believe the city clerk checked the minimum qualifications.
Correct. You, you need to be 18 years of age and registered to vote at your current address, and we checked qualifications on all of those individuals.
Yeah, no, let's, let's, let's do this, though. I mean, you, you can, let, let's, ask that as a question or something. I mean, I don't know, we, I don't know the resources we have to do all this, and then how is that going to be presented to us and?
This is something, once we find our final nomination, we could ask to do a background check for the very last candidate that, that we'd want to do.
That would be after we appoint them.
In campaigns, it's routine to do background checks on your opponent and do public records requests. That's easy to do. It just takes a little work.
And I, I'm not sure that I want to do background checks on, on everybody. I think it's a bit invasive. I think we'll learn a lot between now and, and the interviews because people, you know, are, are doing their own research on people and sending information about people.
Fellow, fellow applicants?
Yes. But, you know, I.
I hate, Ruth, please.
Well, it was, it was just a question.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we need to do that. Okay, so let's see. We have, we're, we're going to use the sheets, the top five, we're going to narrow it down. We'll, we'll make nominations about who are the finalists or we'll nominate somebody to be appointed. The interviews will be.
May 23rd?
May, May 23rd at six or May 24th at six. Each council member will have two questions to ask the candidates, and they'll have one minute each, one minute to answer each question. The candidates are interviewed individually.
They should be the same two questions for each?
Same two questions for each candidate, or how do you want to do that?
No, because I have, I mean, I, I'd like to ask the questions that I want to ask based on who's there.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree.
Okay.
I've been through too many candidate forums where you ask the same question, you get the same answer, and everyone is prepared to answer it.
Yeah, no, I mean.
No, I'm thinking for, for that, uh, because they're all, not for that first round, but for the, the second one.
Yeah, for a second. What will happen is you, some people have given you a whole statement on what they believe on an issue, but that's not what you not want to know about.
In other words, you're not going to have the same question for every candidate.
Yeah, because someone may have answered it already.
That makes sense, but we still get two questions per candidate.
Sure.
And you see, though, the challenge here, if we do the interviews on that first day, we weren't going to know who, we don't even know who the finalists are yet. So it's kind of hard to get your questions together. Because, you know, going into the first day, you'll, you'll have your own people you may be leaning to, but there's 23 people there. You don't, you're not going to have two questions for every 23 people.
Yeah, but we're not going to do questions for.
No, I'm saying if we do interviews that same day, right? We're leaving open that we do interviews right after the statements.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I can pick, I can create my own questions.
You got them right then? Okay.
Right then.
Anybody else see a problem with that? I mean, no? Okay, okay. All right. So we'll still leave that option open. We'll notice both meetings. But yeah, the question, there will be no opening statement or closing statement. It will just be two questions.
Okay.
By each council member. Should move pretty quickly. And then.
And for the initial conversation with each council member or with each candidate, did you decide on two or was it three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
Do we need to vote on that?
We can vote. It sounds like we have consensus, but if you, if you'd like to vote, we can, we can formalize it that way.
Do you want to, how to summarize it? You want me to try and summarize it again?
Sure. Sure. Well, let's start with, we, budget meeting is scheduled for two o'clock on Tuesday, May 23rd. We'll schedule that from two to four. If I might make a suggestion, maybe we schedule the budget meeting from 1:30 to 3:30. Give us about 30 minutes to kind of clear the room and the last time we tried to have back-to-back meetings.
Thirty, you can get there?
It was a little tight.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So, so 1:30 to 3:30 for the budget meeting. Four o'clock start time for the council candidates to give their statements, three-minute statements each. At the end of that time period, maybe we take a recess. We can tally, you, you can, you can provide us with your votes. Megan and I can then tally, and then you can make a determination of, of how you want to move forward.
Send them back to us.
Exactly.
And, uh, public, the public forum about how the scoring ended up.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll start the debate on nominations, yeah.
Right.
The only thing I would add is on the, the order of the candidates, could we just randomize that?
Yeah. How do we do the order when we do commissions and committees and stuff?
We just do it alphabetically by last name.
Alphabetically, but you'd rather randomize.
I'd rather randomize, and that way people, you know, it, if you're an A, you don't always go first.
Well, it could be. So are they going to, are we going to publish the order ahead of time? Or are we going to make?
Well, we.
We'll look into online tools to see if there's something that we can display on the screen. There, there may be an online tool that we could enter in all of the names and, and have it pulled randomly. We'll all have to look into how to do that.
So that would happen right at the beginning of the meeting?
Right.
Everybody would have to be there at, at four.
Correct.
But you might not speak until 5:30.
Right. And that's, that's how we handle commission and committee interviews because we don't know how long each is going to take.
Yeah, okay. All right. That works.
Okay.
But there, yeah, every, so every other, they'll be able to witness the statements of everybody else, of course. So, okay. Somebody's going first. And, okay, and then.
Okay.
Any other questions on?
I, I think we've got it covered. We will advertise for a special meeting at six o'clock on the 24th in the event that you need it. If not, we will cancel that meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
All right. Do we, do we want to make a motion on that?
Do I need to repeat everything or just what you said?
No, no.
What you said. I mean, what you said.
All right.
Second.
Duncan Cabral.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Moving right along. Item B, Orange County, let's see, 2023 trolley update. Letter to the Orange County Transportation Authority and consideration of continuation of the Green Line Trolley.
Good evening, Mayor Duncan and council members. The item in front of you is an update on our trolley, and we've added on to that as well, a letter for your consideration to send to OCTA. So the timeline here, we are about to run our final weekend of the Green Line Trolley, which is.
Boo.
On Saturdays and Sundays. It will run this weekend, but then that is set to transition back to its normal course, which runs as the Blue Line between the San Clonie Outlets and Dana Point Connection. Our, our existing grant agreement with OCTA covers operations between Memorial Day Weekend and September 30th. And the report outlines that there's been some changes over the past couple of years due to the pandemic and operational changes that have occurred during that time. The city did not operate the trolley in 2020 and operated at a reduced schedule in 2021. So there were some funds carryovers due to that lack of service in that window that[1742.46] that allowed us in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two to do the extended Saturday and Sunday service. And people have gotten used to those operations, but that's where that comes from. Our, our standard grant agreement does cover the summer only, so we're about to begin that daily service. Memorial Day Weekend will transition to daily service with three trolleys on the red line and two on the blue line. Uh, the report in front of you includes, as I mentioned before, a letter that outlines what staff would like to see this program expand to cover in the future. Uh, OCTA is going to be doing a call for new grants later this year. Uh, we've been told in the November timeline that that would likely be published, so this letter is preliminary to help OCTA determine the scope of the grant uh, that we can apply for at the end of the year. Uh, when that's awarded, that would kick in for the following fiscal year. So would not cover our operations this upcoming fiscal year, but the following year. We are able to continue operations to include Saturdays and Sundays for the remainder of this year and, and through the beginning of next year. With that Saturday, Sunday service, uh, because of the, uh, carry, remaining carryover funds from twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. Uh, that being said, um, we are also transitioning into a new grant, uh, this fiscal year. And this new grant is a reduced level of funding than we have been using over the past four to five years. Uh, so it is important for us, in my, in staff's opinion, that's why I have this recommended letter here, uh, to advocate for that increased level of funding moving forward. That's a high-level overview, but certainly Zach and myself are available to respond to any questions about the program or funding moving forward.
Any questions before we have comments? Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. So, right now, for this summer, we're, we're the three red and the two blue, and we have the funding for that?
Correct.
And for next year, uh, we're asking for the same thing, three red and two blue, plus an extension of the, the blue?
So, if we, what the letter does is it requests an expanded grant opportunity.
Okay.
And then we would apply for that grant at the end of this year, we would come back to council for that authorization. And what we're hoping for is that, right now, the, the funding limit per city is about five hundred thousand. We're hoping that that significantly increases, so that we can come back to you with a grant request that looks at potentially a permanent green line, or looks at other extensions of that trolley.
But at, at, at a bottom figure, it would be the, the same three for the red and two for the blue for next year?
Yes.
Is what we would be asking, but we haven't received yet.
So, so we actually have the, the new grant that commences this fiscal year, starting in July, carries through fiscal year twenty-seven.
Okay.
But that grant, and I mentioned this in the report, is at a reduced funding level. So, while we've been only contributing ten percent of the cost of operation, we will have to start increasing our contribution beyond ten percent.
What percent?
It, it, it depends on if the council wants to continue service on Saturdays and Sundays year-round, like we've been doing. Uh, that would jump us into a spot where we're paying for about fifty percent of the operations. That's why, again, this, what we're, what we will be seeking from OCTA is a new grant to essentially repeal and replace.
Okay.
This grant that we're about to start.
And that would, that, that request would include the weekend service, so we would pay.
It would.
Almost equivalent to the ten percent?
Correct, that's our goal.
That's, that's, I hope we get it, that's, that would be a good proposal.
Any other questions? Um, I just have one, uh, you know, sort of anecdotal, my own observations. It, it seems that there was more interest in the green line than there's been existing interest in the blue line. I've taken it before, it's kind of a drag, I mean, it's kind of fun because you get to connect to Dana Point, but, you, you know, it takes a while, you're kind of in a place where there's not much going on for a lot of it. Is there an opportunity to kind of merge maybe the green and the blue line and have fewer, you know, like, it doesn't come as often. It's a white, it's a lo, it's a big, bigger, longer loop, but you still then do get people, you still connect to Dana Point, but you get people from State Beach, and, I mean, bringing them into downtown, which I think has really been a benefit.
Good question. Uh, the, the answer, though, is no in the short term because of the grant agreement. So the grant agreement outlines that the city is obligated to maintain that about fifteen-minute headways. So if we merged those lines, that would be the first problem, we'd no longer be able to maintain that timeframe. Uh, and the second is that the grant agreement is specific to, um, the, the locations and stops. So, there are a couple of opportunities every year for us to request minor adjustments, that's in March and October. But that minor adjustment would be, uh, in the general area of the blue line, for instance, we would like to add a new stop. But it wouldn't be to replace the existing line, so that, that's gonna have to be something that we propose in this new grant opportunity.
And that would be end of the year?
So it's, that's something that could, uh, come into place beginning next fiscal year.
Right, but we would make the, the application?
Correct, we would be applying end of this year.
And so we only have, we only have this other option of having shuttles that aren't trolleys continue the green line at, at entirely our cost?
Correct.
Okay, and you, but you're looking for guidance on that as well tonight, or?
So, the council options in front of you, since the direction was an update, we don't have specific numbers for funding, so we are looking for specific direction on authorization for the letter. But if there is an interest in extending the green line in some form, we'd ask that, uh, you give us direction of what you'd like to see, we'll come back with specific details, figures, and options related to that, if you would like to do that.
Okay, perfect.
What's your general, uh, data in terms of popularity of the green line, ride usage as opposed to the blue line?
Yeah, we have been seeing about a thousand riders per weekend, uh, just, just under a thousand, uh, which, which puts us at twenty riders per hour, that's double what the OCTA standard is.
That's all for the green line?
That's for the green line alone, yes.
And that's not even peak season, okay.
Correct, not peak season, those numbers would be higher in the summer.
Okay, um, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I had a question. One of the other problems, I understand it, is that there would be no trolley on that green line, it would be a van or something.
Shuttle.
Some kind of shuttle, maybe even a private car, I don't know. What would it be?
Yes, it would be what you would imagine a white shuttle for the airport to be. So our operator has a few of those, um, and that's baked into the cost here, so it's not just this, uh, the driving hours, but also the rental of those vehicles for the extended period of time.
So, probably wouldn't be as attractive to riders, and they might even be more hesitant to get into a private van than, as opposed to the shuttle that they all know.
It, it does pose a, a branding challenge, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Is there, we have the budgetary process coming up soon. With, in that budgetary process, would it be too late to, if the council were to decide to find revenue for this, uh, extension of a green line over the summer, would it be too late to, to implement that by the time the, the fiscal year begins?
No, it wouldn't be too late. Um, obviously, that kicks in July one, so you'd be starting the summer with no service, we certainly could begin it, um, July one. Um, I know that we've placed a, a line item for, um, a, a city-funded pilot again, uh, within the budget, so that would be, uh, up to the council's purview to modify that line item to, um, use that service as you see fit.
Okay, all right, but we would ask, uh, we, we would have to give you direction tonight to, to, to research the screen line, so we would know kind of how much this might be.
If you would like for the green line to continue during the summer, yes, we'd ask for you to provide that direction.
Okay, all right, um, do we have any comments?
Excuse me, no comments on this item.
I finally remembered to ask about comments, and that we didn't have any. What the hell?
I'll make a motion, we receive and file the administrative report dated May sixteen, two thousand twenty-three, and file with the city clerk, and authorize the city manager to sign and send the letter of interest provided uh, in attachment one to the Orange County Transit Authority.
Do you also want to add direction on having staff report what the cost would be for a green line extension?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right, so it's, um, Mayor Protem Noblock, second is Cabral, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? No. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, we, we approved the staff recommendation, and we asked for, for staff to come back with an estimate for the green line extension. Is that clear? Or you need more detail?
No, that's clear, we'll come back with a couple of options. Um, so the staff report today give one option, but we'll come back with a variety of those, including a resolution if you would like to act on that.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a report, um, from the Private Security Subcommittee.
Mayor and council, I had an opportunity to meet with the Private Security Subcommittee, and they asked me to put together a report for you, which you have in your packet. Um, but I did have a quick presentation that summarizes some of that information, since the information in the packet is several pages. And I'm kind of just talking here while Megan's pulling up the presentation, she's getting there, oh, there it goes, perfect. Um, so the city council took action on April eighteenth, and that action was to form the Subcommittee, and then there was an appropriation not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars per month for a three-month trial period with private security. And the Subcommittee then took the selection process, and they, they actually considered four security firms, but only completed three interviews, because one of the security firms had already presented to the city council, and they had that information and the proposal from them. So the three additional firms that were interviewed was High Watch, I'm sorry, Firewatch Solutions, High Level Security, and Allied Universal. And then there was also a proposal from the Orange County Sheriff that was reviewed for future consideration, and we'll hit that as well. So, after those interviews, the Subcommittee, um, is proposing that we use Allied Universal Security Service. Some of the findings for that, for that recommendation is a competitive cost structure. Um, they were, I believe, actually, the lowest proposal. Um, but they also, the size of the firm provides some flexibility, it's a very large firm. They told us that they have about eight hundred thousand employees worldwide, and so they, they do have some flexibility of, of either growing or shrinking as our needs occur here in, in San Clemente. And that size of the firm also allows the officers to be modified, they have everything, of course, from event staff, which is unarmed and, and whatnot, to have full armed security guards, if that's something that the city council would desire. They also have extensive experience working with government agencies, they work with several agencies here in the, both Los Angeles and, well, I think throughout, throughout the world, of course, but in our area, in Los Angeles and Orange Counties, they provide services. So some of the basics of their proposal is that for four officers for twelve hours per day and seven days a week, it would be fifty-eight thousand dollars per month. But that price is scalable, so if the city council decided to look at two officers, for instance, for seven days a week, that would be twenty-nine thousand dollars per month. But the, or an annual cost is six hundred and fifty-one thousand. The price includes officers, uniforms, vehicles, and equipment, which includes the data gathering equipment that we've seen, uh, discussed by the other security, uh, agents that have come and talked to the city council before. And at least one of the officers would be a supervisor. Excuse me, there was also, they also wanted to make sure that the city council considered some metrics for, for whether or not this program is being successful. So some of the things they looked at were the number and location of the contacts that they make, uh, the time of day, the type of violation, whether or not the contacts are repeat contacts or whether they are, um, unique contacts. The number of sheriff calls that are generated, you know, how much of this can they handle on their own versus how many calls does this now generate for the sheriff's department? And the services offered, whether or not it's a mental health service, whether it's physical health service or referrals for job training, housing, some of those kinds of things. Also wanted to make sure that you understood the proposal that was submitted by the sheriff's department. They did say it would take a few months to put this in place, of course, they would need to, to hire some new deputies and go through some of those background checks. First proposal would be to have four additional deputies and create essentially a new, a service area or a new beat for the sheriff's department. That would be four additional deputies at about three hundred and five thousand dollars per deputy, one point two million dollars. Um, and the first year cost only, and this is just to get the equipment, the vehicles and whatnot, would be two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So, again, that first year monthly cost would be about one twenty thou, a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars per month. And then, from there on, it'd be about a hundred and two thousand dollars a month. Second proposal would be to add another behavioral health liaison, which is similar to the, not similar, exactly the same job that Deputy Garcia has, and then two additional deputies. And that would be about nine hundred and sixteen thousand per year. Again, there's that first year service cost for the, the first year, or, I'm sorry, equipment cost for the first year. So the monthly cost would be ninety-five thousand dollars for the first year, and then seventy-six thousand plus just routine maintenance thereafter. So I wanted to make sure that you are aware that the sheriff's department is very interested in providing these services as well. So the next steps, um, is should the city council move forward with any kind of private security? The Subcommittee still has work to do. Uh, they need to review the metrics and make sure to provide information to the council on a monthly basis, some kind of a report that can be given to the city council, perhaps posted on the webpage, um, and make sure that, that people can understand whether or not this has been successful. And then, we also want to make sure that we're looking at the effectiveness of private security versus bringing on our own staff, or perhaps going the route of having additional sheriff deputies. And they would want to look at things like cost and training and liability for the city. Or, or perhaps, uh, look and analyze about doing a mixture of having some additional sheriff personnel, maybe some of our own staff, and even augmented then, again, by private security. So, um, that, that kind of ends the, at least the report from the, from the Private Security Subcommittee. Again, the, the action was previously taken by the city council that should, should the council feel good about this report, we can move forward quite quickly and, and start to get some private security, um, at, at at least a trial period of not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars per month for three months. So, um, I would certainly defer any, any additional comments to the Subcommittee, who had an opportunity to interview, uh, these firms, and they may have some comments as well, but at least that's a summary of what's in the report.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Extraordinary, uh, summary, I think that covered about everything, I don't have much more to add. Uh, Steve and I did, uh, have the opportunity to meet with, uh, these groups. Uh, they're all extraordinarily qualified, they're all, uh, do exactly what, what I think we expect uh, for addressing some of the security concerns in San Clemente. Uh, this, this last company that we're recommending, uh, we recommend it only because they, they have the scale and the scope and can adjust quickly to the, to our needs. They can change, uh, pretty much on, uh, a, a few days' notice, uh, to, uh, add more people or subtract people. So we could, uh, we could make the necessary changes, and they could, they could change, you know, where they, where they're positioned, how they're positioned. So we just, we, we gotta get them rolling. One of the things that we had discussed originally is that we just wanted to, uh, at the beginning of this summer, you know, we, we needed the security, uh, we need it at a three-month trial basis, we'll be able to test uh, how well they're doing, uh, what the impact is, we'll have measurable results. And, uh, second, I want, I, I just want to point out, I think what, uh, the, the sheriff has done uh, in North Beach has been extraordinary, uh, and this takes nothing away from it. My, my, I think the concept has always been, uh, to supplement, you know, and, and assign the tasks that, uh, they are not, uh, they can't stand and watch, uh, the violations all day, and, and that's what we really need in order to, uh, ensure that public is safe at various locations throughout our city. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we have people coming in every day, and we need to figure out where they are. Uh, we, we need to, to know who they are, we have to identify them quickly. We have to let them know that there are standards here in this city, that they're not going to be able to drink and do drugs, and that, that they will be observed. And so, uh, with summer coming up, we want to do that in an expeditious manner. I think this firm gives us the flexibility on a three-month interim basis to, to carry out the will that we've voted on previously, and, and then we can adjust, make, uh, make changes as we deem necessary, or as the, as the council deems necessary, to address the concerns and modify the proposal, or look at in-house, or look to the sheriffs. So those are all things, we're, this is just a Band-Aid, immediate, uh, uh, the quickest we could address the, the issues that's been raised for the past five years, so. I think it's, uh, I'm at the appropriate time to move to approve this, uh, as, as is outlined in the agenda.
Steve, any comments? You're also on the Subcommittee.
Yes, uh, I was, uh, pleased to be on the Subcommittee, we interviewed, we interviewed these firms. Let me start with a little background, the concern is that North Beach has criminal activity that, that hasn't been properly addressed to the satisfaction of a lot of the folks that live in, in North Beach. Um, we, we began the process looking at the firms to make sure that we had some immediate activity, and that was a concern to a lot of people. Of the firms that we did interview, clearly Allied was the strongest, the, uh, the, had the most resources and the ability to move promptly. It's a little, a little frustrating, because the firms that, with private firms that we did talk to aren't able to get up and running right away. They're able to get up and running, you know, in a month, forty days, forty-five days. And, uh, our concern was that we had immediate, immediate coverage. Well, one of the great things that's occurred in the last month or so, and Victor, you mentioned it, is the outstanding job that the sheriff's department has done. I think Captain Christian has marshaled his resources effectively, and, and the. I think Captain Christian has marshaled his resources effectively and, and the results in North Beach are dramatic. I go down there once or twice a day just to drive through the parking lot to see how many folks are hanging out, doing nefarious sorts of things. And it's impressive. I, I haven't been down there once where there hasn't been one or two vehicles with deputies not in their car but on the, on the asphalt, walking, doing the job. And it is impressive. And, you know, we have a budget system, budget hearings that are coming up and we have a new fiscal year starting in about six weeks. We have firms that won't be able to really get up and running within that timeframe. So, and my, my concern has always been, we need, we need, you know, eyes and ears on the ground and, but we need citation authority and arrest authority when the crimes are happening that, that need to be observed. So my concern initially with this has, has changed a little bit in that I think we probably need, in terms of the private security people, less security people for a less timeframe. And the fact that the sheriff's department has filled that gap quite effectively, you know, I, I'm wondering if, if, and come July 1, when the new fiscal year happens, my inclination would be to make sure we have uniformed people doing their job and maybe increase the uniform presence. There were several options that Captain Christian presented. And my, my thinking is, it's been so effectively addressed with our current personnel that if we address it at all, we go with probably the second option with maybe one additional deputy instead of two. So I, my frustration has been that the, the immediate Band-Aid that we needed, that Band-Aid isn't going to happen within the timeframe that it takes to, to get the sheriff's department up and running. So while we looked at that and we, we looked at those firms, I, I've just been so impressed with how the sheriff is working. I, I'm wondering in my core whether we really need to have this kind of expenditure that, to that extent for a private firm when the sheriff's department is doing such a great job presently. So again, those are my, just general observations and, and that attitude has changed almost daily as I daily visit North Beach and see the job that Captain Christian's people are doing.
Mark?
I would concur. I was there today. They are doing phenomenal work. It is clear that, that they are effective. I like the, the second option that was on there for a second, was a mental health officer and, and two deputies. I, I think you're right on the timing that it would take just as long to get a private security up and running as it would to get, I mean, slightly longer for sheriffs to be ready, but it would be a much larger bang for your buck, in my opinion. I think we do need to address that, the bigger issue that's going on is that we are not in compliance with Martin versus Boise. Until we are, this will continue to occur. And I'm already hearing from friends and members in the community that yes, North Beach is being cleaned up, but that issue is now being spread in other areas of the city. So I'll, I'll end it on that.
All right. I'd just say, yeah, the credit to Captain Christian and his team for, for stepping up and, and really showing results in the North Beach area. That's been great to see. I think we, we know what we get when we have our, our, our police chief from San Clemente, right? So we, we see that we get, we get that immediate action. So that was great to see. And yeah, I mean, I, I tend to agree with, with Steve who was on the subcommittee. I, I'd rather have more deputies than more anybody else. We have limited funds. I would, I would probably go for option one where we get, what was it, four deputies or?
Four deputies.
The whole, I, I like the beach patrol idea where we have a whole nother crew. I think that's worth the money. Nothing, you can't put a price tag on public safety and ensuring that our town is clean and safe for our businesses. So, you know, that, that would be my position is, is go with, go with that new patrol and find, you know, you know, adjust the budget to make that happen. Because again, quality of life, that's our calling card. So when we don't have that, we, we, nothing else really matters. So that's kind of where I come out.
Mayor, we do have two speaker cards.
Yeah, okay.
If you want to get them.
Yep. Speaker cards then. See, I forgot again now.
Didn't want you to get to the vote. You ready for them now?
Yeah.
First speaker is Diane Harkey. I don't see her still here.
Diane's here.
Oh, she's there. I see her. Okay. And then followed by Amanda.
Diane Harkey, Dana Point, and I'm not running for anything. I have very much a concern for South Orange County. I love South Orange County, which is why I represented it for years. And one of the key features of South Orange County is that we are contract cities and we get the facilities and the extra plus that we get from the sheriff's department and extra attention. Now, there is a cost to it, but I think the quality of service just cannot be denied. And I think, I've, I've been up and down all the cities that are contract cities for a variety of reasons, but also because we have a new county supervisor and I'm trying to keep her abreast as well so that we don't get North County solutions for South County. South County is unique, it's different, and I'm really pleased to hear the way that this conversation is going because City of San Clemente is understaffed in their, in their sheriff's department. They just are. And I've got a chart and I went through all the cities and so I know where everybody is. And we've got another, another city that's very understaffed as well. You're not very, but you're understaffed, especially considering that that city's inland, you're on the beach, you're going to have tourists galore in a couple of months. And, and the sheriff that's, you know, reallocating resources right now is going to need those resources. There's also a lot of crime going on from Chilean gangs have come up here on a 45-day visa that is not checked by the US, not even checked anymore by Chile. So they're, our congresspeople are trying to get that kind of revoked, or DA is, that they don't have that privilege anymore. But they're coming up and they're, they're scouring neighborhoods and I know there was a problem in Toledo and they're breaking into the top floors because you don't have the monitors in the top floor to tell you who have motion detectors. So, you know, it, there's a lot going on right now in the law enforcement area. You're going to need to staff up. Your, your city is beautiful, your people are beautiful, the community is wonderful in South County. And we just need to spend a little bit more on our law enforcement because you can't live, work, play, or enjoy anything if you don't feel safe. And you've got a lot of really great areas to protect. So I hope that you will increase your funding for law enforcement, get your sheriffs beefed up. You won't be sorry. I think you get, you'll get A1 service. So thank you very much.
She sure is earning her endorsement from the sheriffs. So I'm definitely in support of private security because it solves the immediate problems that I have been, have been occurring at North Beach for years, for over five years, and that is a concern. We had many residents come up, business owners, and speak in support of private security. Mr. Artemio tonight stated that the, in his homeless report, that the homeless have currently dispersed from that, from North Beach. And so that's, I think this is just a temporary, temporary thing. In the hot summer months, they love to gravitate to North Beach and they love being there, down at that area. I'm also concerned regarding the areas of Del Mar. There's a lot of, you know, problem areas there, a lot of homeless also defecating in that area, a lot of problems with, I think, was it clothes being just, just, you know, scattered here and there? And there's concerns regarding the health and safety issues regarding that. But I think it's very important to, that you remember all of the concerns from the business owners, the residents, and all of the emails that you received from multiple people throughout the years regarding the problems down at North Beach and Del Mar and other areas that are really need to, that need to have a solution regarding this. You know, I had said, stated that safety is paramount, paramount of importance and I think it's, still holds true regarding that. So I, I know the sheriff's proposed, made a proposal, but I'm concerned regarding about how much time they're going to be spending down at the beach. And I think having a beach patrol may be a solution for that. But I think right now to solve this immediate solution, I mean, this immediate problem, we need to have private security there. You need to remember all the people that spoke in support of that. And I think that it does it a service when you don't listen and remember what they stated. You know, this is, the public spoke very loudly and I think you need to remember that. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Concerned resident?
Thank you, AQ. Public safety is paramount. You keep telling us that, but not for everybody, huh? Nope. Can't shut, can't raise any hairs on any red shirts and close those courts so that the little leagues and the soccer leagues can play without creating the unsafe conditions in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional comments.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion or a motion?
Yeah. It, it sounds like we're moving more towards the sheriff. That's been the, the sentiment. I think there's an urgency. Maybe we could, if Captain Christian would, would, would offer to come up and talk about his proposal, I mean, I'd like to hear more about it since he's one of the few we didn't interview and I, I actually like it. I just want to get, see something get done immediately. And so if, you know, if my colleagues are looking at the, at the sheriff option, well, let's do that then.
Good chance to show off for your boss.
He's got two bars, the other guy has one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's a star. Star's more powerful. Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Sorry for putting you on the spot.
No, that's quite all right, Victor. So yeah, Andy, Andy basically went over the proposal and these were just some of the ideas that I came up with that I think would be beneficial. And right now, our beaches transverse four different patrol zones. So an idea was to, well, maybe we create, since the beach is such a hot topic, maybe we create another patrol zone. By doing that, and, and also added, okay, the possibility of adding Del Mar to that zone. So if we get a deputy 24/7 in that zone, it's going to decrease response time to those areas specifically. That would include North Beach, that would include the Pier Bowl area and maybe the, the South Beach area. Again, that's an option. We get four deputies, that would cover 12-hour shifts, AM and PM on two sides of the week, which is a typical patrol strategy that we're, we're currently working under. The other option would be to add a behavioral health liaison. Right now Amber works 10-hour shift from Tuesday through Friday. So there is a bulk of the week that's not covered with a BHL, who is skilled in working with people experiencing homelessness. Another BHL, I could adjust her schedule to have seven-day-a-week coverage by, to the BHLs. And then adding additional staff, two additional deputies would, would kind of create another, we could, we could still do the patrol zone, but it wouldn't be covered seven days a week with two additional deputies. But maybe we could have that zone for maybe our busiest times, like the weekends, 24 hours a day with, with two additional deputies. To me, that seems like a sensible solution for that area. The costs are what they are. City manager talked about it. I, I understand law enforcement is expensive and I think it was also touched on, that's why.
What's the cost? It's one point?
It's 305,000 for the body, for the deputy. And that includes overhead costs with, you know, that salary and employee benefits, patrol training. That comes with the body worn camera and the PACSAT radio. And then the additional cost would be a vehicle, right? So we need to, we need to put a vehicle with a deputy and if we added four deputies, we only need two vehicles because of, of resource sharing. That vehicle cost the first year is 114,000 dollars, but it significantly drops the following year because you're not purchasing the vehicle anymore. And it, it becomes a maintenance and some reoccurring costs with a patrol computer and whatnot. But that significantly drops from about 114,000 down to about 5,000 to 6,000 dollars a year to maintain that vehicle.
And for, to get the kind of coverage that we have right now at North Beach in all the problem areas that we have, what would that cost us? What would it take to, to, to get that same result that we're getting right now?
Well, luckily, right now, it's not our typical busy time of year. So we've, we've been lucky being able to allocate resources from other patrol zones to put them down there to, to address the issue. That's been such a hot button topic, right? We're coming into our very busy time of year where our population increases due to tourism and beach travelers. It gets, it gets extremely busy. Currently, right now, at any given time on a shift, we have five patrol deputies. And then we have some, some coverage during the busy times to help supplement that. But our model is, with 30 deputies, we have five on each side of the week, 12-hour shifts, and then, like I said, the additional during the busy times. So I, I don't know if there's an easy answer for that question, but if I had another patrol zone, I would definitely have a deputy 24 hours a day in the area of the beach, Del Mar if we want to include that. We have an order for bike racks right now. We have a couple of e-bikes. A patrol car could go in service with an e-bike on there. The deputy could take the e-bike up Del Mar business area and cruise around that area as well. So it would definitely reduce response time, whether it be in North Beach or from North Beach to the pier. They've got the access to, to ride an ATV or the bike down there.
Could it expand also because I, I mean, we get people that come in and they're, they may not be right on Del Mar, they may not be in North Beach, but, you know, 20 people see them walking into San Clemente, getting off the freeway or getting dropped off and they're sitting on the corner by the freeway. Would it, could it include that kind of coverage also?
Yes, it could. I mean, we already have patrol zones, so every area, every area in the city is covered by a zone. So you already have a deputy assigned to a specific zone. So this, an extra zone would alleviate a response from that deputy doing another area of that, or that zone that's already there to come down and deal with a problem at the beach because now we have a deputy assigned to the beach. So it's more boots on the ground, it's more deputies, it's more, you're going to spread the, the amount of calls against more deputies as opposed to what we already have, so.
Now, one other question. How long would we have to keep this or could, could we modulate this during the year or is there like a fixed cost for a year or is?
Yes, it's a fixed, it's a fixed cost for a year.
Okay. And, and, and your recommendation would be what? To, to address all these issues?
I think I've offered a couple of ideas here. There's recommendations, you know, however the city decides how they go with it. I mean, it's, it's something that we could talk about with the city manager as far as the model that we want to, want to choose here.
Yeah.
But I think they're both pretty good recommendations.
But in your expert opinion, to, to, to get the kind of coverage that you're, you have right now at North Beach to, to address the issue, what would that take? Proposition one or proposal one or proposal two?
Well, I think with proposition one, you have a deputy assigned to that zone, whatever he decided to be, 24/7.
All right.
Captain, can you explain, we've, we've thrown a term around tonight with the behavioral health. Can, can you explain what that behavioral health liaison, actually what their job is?
Sure.
They're, they're full deputies, but, but can you explain what their?
Yeah, so that position, the behavioral health liaison, their main, their main duty is to provide enforcement and outreach. So Amber, on a daily basis, has contact and communication with all of our homeless population. She has a very good rapport with the homeless population. She provides, offers outreach to them to get them in touch with mental health services, with county healthcare agencies, and then she also works alongside our city employees, Carly and Troy, to get that done in, in a unified effort. There's a little additional training for the BHL. They, they work, the, the BHL, because they also work with our Behavioral Health Bureau. And so they're kind of tied into that whole aspect as far as providing outreach for people that, that do want services. So there's, there's extra resources for Amber to, to contact, to get Behavioral Health Bureau assistants to come down to San Clemente when time allows for them, having another Having another BHL, like I stated previously, in service would mean that we'd have seven days a week coverage as opposed to just Tuesday through Friday that we have now.
I'm glad you submitted your proposal. Originally, I thought we might do this a little bit less expensively, but, you know, if my colleagues are thinking law enforcement is the answer, I'm certainly for it.
No, I think just one other thing to say about the service that you get with the sheriff's department. You're getting deputies that are trained. They go to a six-month academy, they come out, they get additional training, they're trained in CIT, which is crisis intervention. So they know how to deal with some of these things that they see out on the streets. Not only that, they have the authority to write citations and take people to jail. And I know that's not something you're going to get with the private security.
I appreciate your comments.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move proposal one.
Excuse me, I do want to let you know we got one additional speaker card. It's your pleasure whether or not you would like to hear that.
Our discretion. Okay, let's hear it.
Okay. Lois McNichol?
So, after three meetings where we begged for private security and you finally said, "Okay, we'll give it to you," now we're coming back to, "We're going to have sheriffs doing it." Fine. Are they going to be walking along the beach to see in the rocks where the homeless are hiding and watching and looking out for people? Because all of you people who say you've driven in the parking lot or you've gone down there once or twice and everything looks cool, it isn't cool. It is not cool. I'm sorry that you can't see it and I'm sorry that it's not popping right up out of the woodwork and attacking you, but it's there. And the reason we need private security, no offense, but the reason we need private security is because they can do things that the cops shouldn't have to do, like walk the beach trails to find out where these people are hiding and not just hiding, they're not just hiding under the rocks, they're coming out from underneath the rocks and attacking people. So that is what is happening along the beach trail, not just on North Beach, even though that's where I live, it's not just North Beach. They do move down and you're right, but we're not just a hot-button topic either, okay? So I would really love to stop doing that. This is not something you're going to say, "Oh, we're going to pour cold water on it for 30 seconds and then as soon as everybody goes away, we can not think about it anymore." This is not a hot-button topic. This is the place where we live. This is what we need. We need to have security there always, not when we finally get it because we've spoken up so many times.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion was made, has it been seconded?
It hasn't yet.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion is proposal one?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Boom. Beach Patrol.
Boo!
Okay.
And next item on the agenda is Project Homeward Bound. There's no staff report for this item.
Go ahead. Are we, oh, do we have a presentation for, well, this is, you would have to do it, Mark. I think, right? No, we only have two. So you don't have to do a presentation, you guys discuss it.
Oh, yeah. So the idea behind here is just that we would direct the Human Affairs Committee to look into how they can use more resource or direct them for Project Homeward Bound to get more people connected with their families and reunite them. Seems like we're doing a lot of that already with our current outreach services. This is just, how can the Human Affairs Committee come alongside them to support them in that? Either through advertisement or through putting on, passing out flyers, basically to direct them to support the, our social workers out there.
Do you anticipate any costs, cost for this, for the city?
If so, it would be minimal, a few hundred dollars.
I think in terms of the homeless issue, I think probably one of the strongest issues to prevent and cure homelessness is to have family members reach out and take people back and care for their family members. Homeward Bound does that, so I'm supportive of the concept. I think currently our homeless advocates are probably interacting with that concept. Is this an organization that specifically does this that they're not currently working with?
Saying the Human Affairs Committee, we would tell, commission, we would tell them to research it and see if there could be augmentations made to, so we could use the program more.
Okay, is there an actual company that has a program that exists that is currently separate than what we're currently doing? That's what I don't understand.
No, so Homeward Bound is what we're using.
That's an organization.
Yes, the organization, yes, but the Human Affairs Committee would be directed from us to see how can the Human Affairs Committee support our current workers in the field.
I have no problem with that. I'd like to support that.
Any other questions or, okay, you want to make a motion?
We do have one public comment.
Oh, we have a comment.
Amanda Q.
Basically, I'll just make this really short about this. You know, the Homeward Bound program has been in effect for years now. This is nothing new. But directing the Human Affairs Committee to do, to support them, I'm really concerned about that as far as, because they only meet a certain timeframe per month, I think it was at one time per month. So I'm just kind of wondering, you know, what's involved in that process. But, you know, the Homeward Bound program, I remember Mr. Otamian saying that they have some good results, but the people come back. And so that's a big concern and, you know, I really didn't catch what Mr. Otamian said earlier on the day regarding the Homeward Bound program, but at the leadership academy, he did say that they are a percentage that do come back and, you know, they go back home and then wherever that is and then they return. So we have some people that come back and, so anyways, I just wanted to do a brief statement regarding my concerns regarding this. Thank you very much.
All right. Motion?
I'd make a motion to assign the Human Affairs Committee researching benefits of working with Project Homeward Bound and how they can augment the services that we are utilizing with the city already.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Anmeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Cabal.
Aye.
Mayor Potemnabat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So that's unanimous. And...
Oral Communications Part Two. Tony Rubellino.
Privileged Duncan, a pattern of entitlement. Let's go ahead and start the slideshow. So let's go back to 2020 when Duncan was campaigning and we have Del Mar here with boarded-up shops. People were scared, businesses were afraid. I remember seeing Target moving the electronics out of their cases. We had sheriffs all over, we had riot gear, we had protests. Next slide. Where was Duncan? Right in the middle of it all. Knee on the ground, fist in the air, right next to that sign, "Defund the police." Nobody should ever forget what Duncan did here. When he had the opportunity to step on the sheriff's back and throw them under the bus, he didn't hesitate to do it. We should always, always remember this and every chief, every captain that we have moving forward and currently should never forget this shot. Next slide. Duncan went ahead and made a press release. Wow, look at that. Apparently we've joined some anti-gun rights group here and it's on City Letterhead. Did we get that approved? Do you guys have any discussion about that? Next slide. Oh, here we are. More City Letterhead. All the council's names on that. Noblock, did you support that? I don't know about Ferguson. Man, I don't know. I know Gene didn't. Wow. All right, next slide. Here's Duncan and this was a shot at the same time when he was really pushing e-bike safety while he's literally transporting his child without a helmet on a bike. Next slide. Okay, here was Duncan's excuse, right? He ran into the liquor store because he had to grab a bag of ice. I don't know about you guys, I have never once even thought, had the notion to park in a handicap stall for any reason short of an emergency. Next slide. And then this was just this past Friday. Duncan parked literally between two no-parking signs to unload a group of children at this Del Mar. This is hugely dangerous, highly inappropriate of an elected official to do that. So why am I showing all this to you? Well, let's talk about Duncan's entitlement. I've only got a few seconds left. We need to hold him accountable. Let's revisit the $4,600 for the DC trip. The least you could do, council, is agendize a discussion on the issue. Does it mean you're alleging any impropriety? Let's just discuss it. We're looking for lions, not sheep, from our council members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Next up is future agenda items?
Any other?
I'm sorry, no additional speakers.
All right. Future agenda items. Anybody, yeah, I think we had some, right? Steve, you had some on the...
Yeah, I think we need to consider the appointments for the departed council member Gene James, his appointments to the Chamber of Commerce, Marine Corps Liaison, and I think there may be some other appointments, I'm not sure what they are, but we'll probably need to fill those. So we haven't agendized those in the past, but we probably need to do that sooner rather than later.
So, yeah, I agree with that. There are some where there's alternates, so, but I know Marine Corps is and I don't think there is. So what's our process for that?
I had planned to bring an item back to council once the new council member is appointed or once council makes a decision on whether or not they're appointing someone or going to special elections. So we could have something as early as the June 6 meeting regardless of whether or not you select a candidate.
That's at our next meeting, so that was timed, that'd probably be okay.
Okay, yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, I didn't know that. Thank you. Laura?
Any other items for...
Well, let me just, let me just comment on the last speaker. I don't want to be political, but in the last year, we had a couple of council members, Kathy Ward and Gene did some public press releases regarding the TCA that were, press releases on behalf of the city that were not approved by the city that accused council members in other cities that served on the CTA board of multiple felonies. And it troubled me and I brought it up to the council just to say, you know, let's be circumspect in how we use, you know, those kind of city resources. And to Kathy Ward's credit, she acknowledged it and said, "Point well taken." And the other council member was more dogmatic and didn't think there was anything wrong with that. So I just think we all need to be cognizant of, you know, we all serve the community and if one of us decides to run for public office at a higher office, we just need to be aware that the line should be carefully monitored and I know you're aware of that and I don't want to make this a political comment, but I just think we all need to be aware of those issues and be circumspect in our conduct.
Agreed. Okay. Any other future agenda items?
I'd like to speak to that. I didn't want...
What agenda?
The last speaker.
Okay, well, that's not...
I disagree and I expect that in the future, and I think you will, I trust you will, be just a little bit more understanding of the concerns. When you're running a race, you know what's going to happen and we, and not just you, we expect a higher level of conduct from all of us. All of us should act within the community with the understanding that we've got to act respectful of the community and I'll try and hold myself to that standard because I probably have failed at times too, but we each have to do a better job and that would include you, Mayor, and I hope you do.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate your support. Let's see. Any other agenda items? No, okay. Onto reports, commissions and committees. Let's see.
I'll just say I had the opportunity as the alternate for the Songs Committee that I was able to go down and see the power plant and the decommissioning of it this last week. It is an incredible operation, what they're doing. I will say that I felt completely safe the entire time. I feel like our community should feel safe with what's going on there, but they do do tours for the public if anyone is interested in seeing that, but it was a really insightful tour to go around.
Great. Okay, how about subcommittees?
Well, just regarding the North Beach security issue, now that we've kind of gone in the direction of the sheriff's department providing those extraordinary, extra services, do we need to eliminate that subcommittee or do you think we need monitoring on a going-forward basis? I'm suggesting maybe we consider eliminating the subcommittee.
It's, I'd like to keep it only so that we can, you know, keep monitoring because the needs will change and I think we could, as long as we keep monitoring, there'll be changes, modifications, concerns.
Okay, just wanted to see what the...
Let's keep it for now and, I mean, you can still work on the metrics, right, to see if there's progress down there and, okay. Any other subcommittees? No, okay. Councilmembers. GAG?
Yeah, I attended SAG. I came back with a lot of material that I'm going to turn over to our city manager about a number of programs that are available to cities that they may want to distribute throughout the city on energy programs, truck buses assistance, energy assistance, all the different programs that we may have seen before and even some for the community on free internet. So I'll turn this over to the, to the, our city manager and let him distribute as he sees fit.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Just note, I was at the sand signing, so we're getting that sand later this year. So that was fun to have Army Corps of Engineers there. Stating the city was a success and so that was a lot of fun for those who came. That's all for me. City Attorney.
Thank you. I have nothing to report, just a pleasure to serve the city of San Clemente.
Thank you. City Manager.
Mayor and Council, we do have one contract that has been with, let's see, Underground Solutions and they are helping us with our recycled water quality improvement project in the amount of $38,425.
Thank you. I have, I haven't fully gotten all the facts, but, you know, all these bottles and cans that they stopped taking back at some point in time at these stores, there's a company now that is collecting those with a city contract and then taking that money and distributing it to nonprofits and other groups and organizations. So I'm going to get some more information and see if there's a way that we can tie into that program and maybe get some money for some of the programs here in the city that need some extra funds because right now, and it's also good for recycling because right now I think people just throw them in the trash, which is not a good thing. Right, thanks.
Agreed. Well, before we do the adjournment, I just want to, is this now the right time, Laura? Okay. We're going to adjourn tonight in memory of Rod Rodriguez from Rod's Tree Service, of course, and the whole Rodriguez family is such, you know, gives so much to the city. So tonight we adjourn in memory of... So, tonight, we adjourn in memory of Richard Rod Rodriguez. Rod has a long history of service to San Clemente, beginning with his time as a police officer for the San Clemente Police Department. Rod continued his service to the community through his family-owned business, Rod's Tree Service. Rod was perhaps best known for being a prominent figure in San Clemente through his volunteer work at countless community events, functions, and local service clubs. On behalf of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, I thank Rod for his service to our community. We'll miss seeing Rod's smiling face around town.
Could I just add one little thing? Yeah, I met Rod. He did so much for the Marines, and that was one of his biggest programs, I think. But he's done so much for this community, I just think it's it's great that we're honoring him tonight in this closing.
Yeah, and, you know, if you know the Rodriguez family and Rod's Tree Service, they're at every event, they're still supporting us. So, he started a legacy of support from the Marine Corps all the way through to the city and our law enforcement officers and agencies. So, yeah. He will be missed, but his impact will still be felt. Now, the summary, want to try to do this adjournment?
I can read it if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Adjourn to an adjourned regular meeting to be held on May 23rd at 1:30 PM, May 23rd, 2023, at 1:30 PM for the purpose of conducting the budget workshop. The meeting will take place in the council chambers located at 910 Cali Negotio, second floor, San Clemente. Next regular council meeting is scheduled to take place on June 6, 2023. Closed session will begin at 5 o'clock PM, and the regular business meeting will begin at 6 o'clock PM. Meeting will take place in the council chambers located at 910 Cali Negotio, second floor, San Clemente.
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And just to clarify, we'll do that, that special meeting will be announced separately?
Correct, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, the candidate binders.